Welcome to our City of Lakeville work session. It is May 26, Tuesday night, and it is 6:30 PM. I will call our meeting to order, and please rise if you're able for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. A few opening comments. Welcome back to City Hall, and we are glad to be back here in adjusted format. We are all maintaining physical distancing, and feel free to wear a mask if you desire to do that. And I'm thankful for staff to have figured out how to handle this technologically, so not only are we here present in this room, but there are people online that can be listening in to this session. And at the appropriate time, citizen comments, as well as when we get to certain items, I will endeavor to remember to ask for a public comment if there is someone on the phone other than who's in the room that would like to make a comment to City Council at that With that, we will move into our second item on the agenda, which is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for us to hear comments and questions from our residents and business owners. Please limit your comments to three minutes if you are called upon, and when you start your comments, if you could please state your name and phone number, excuse me, name and address for the record, we would greatly appreciate that. And at this time, I'm going to turn to Mr. Miller and ask if there is anyone on the live feed that would like to make a citizen's comment at this time.
It does not appear, so Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we move to item number three on our work session, which is Fire Department External Review.
In person.
I'm sorry, what?
In person.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to make a citizen's comment? I'm sorry, I saw you here earlier too, and I thought I just blew it off. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris Erickson, 1-8971, 1-8791, Inlet Road, and someplace in Lakeville, anyway. No prepared comments, I'm only here on behalf of Lakeville Friends of the Environment to support the green steps and offer our support and assistance with the community involvement any way we can.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Thank you. I don't see anyone else here onsite, so we will move on to the Fire Department External Review, and this is a new matter in front of us tonight, and Chief Meyer, I believe you're going to share thoughts about this topic.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We did share a memo with you looking at a Fire Department Comprehensive Need Study. With some of those items, I'm just going to run through it kind of quickly for you. The study, what we're kind of looking at is we need to look at our response, as far as what are our goals for response, staffing needs, apparatus needs, facility needs, and look at the adequacy of the Fire Department as far as it evolves around those three items. Some of the things, just to highlight as far as the memo goes, is that we kind of look at two key questions regarding the memo and what we're looking for from the study. What are the outcomes of a desired emergency, so whether it's a fire, a medical, kind of what we're seeing currently is that, obviously, the medical volume for what we're dealing with today has increased quite a bit for us, and the other side of it is that the firefighters are doing more training, more medical training, and are more prepared to handle those medicals. We have a number, I think we're up to about 26, I think it is 28 EMTs on the department, so a higher level medical care, so that's one step below paramedic, the remainder of the Fire Department are EMRs, so we're getting that higher level of training to handle medicals. And the second question to look at is, does our current fleet, apparatus fleet and fire stations meet our current desired needs, and what does that look like in the future? So as we continue to grow as a city, what do we need the Fire Department to continue to grow? So a good example is all four stations were built during their time to house a volunteer pay-on-call department. So if we move forward with staffing for a 24-hour, whether that's a duty crew program where the firefighter sign up to work overnight, we don't have a facility to handle that, so we have no bedrooms or bunks available for them. So even if we do, so there's times where we've staff stationed overnight during winter weather emergencies, the firefighters just basically have to stay awake, or they kind of sit on the couches or in the dayroom area, training room area. So we need to look at, comprehensively, look at us as a whole, as a department, and what do we want those outcomes to look like? We did contact three firms to kind of look at and request some information from them of what that would look like and what those estimates, cost estimates, would be. We only got two replies, and in the memo you can see Baker Tilly and City Gate were the two that did give us replies with cost estimates if we were to go out for an RFP with them, and it ranged from $40,000 to $70,000. There's no, at this time, we did not budget in 2020, so this would be a 2021 initiative as far as a budget project if we were to move forward, so what we're kind of looking for from yourselves tonight is direction on that of moving forward, if we put it in the budget and move forward with that study. I don't know if Mr. Miller has anything else to add to that?
Okay.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, this is a work session, so we'll have some dialogue. Council, Hellier.
So Chief, one, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Two, are these, well, number one, are these firms either similar to or have done types of studies? Did Burnsville do a study before they kind of made their new decision on fire, and Egan? I'm just trying to think, like, in the industry of neighboring cities, have they followed, like, this similar path? Is my...
Correct, using, Burnsville did, and that's where the Baker Tilly, that's who they have used in the past. City Gate was from Egan, as far as that's who Egan used to where their model, what they moved forward with.
Okay.
So those are the two firms that did reply to us.
Okay.
As far as that goes.
So have our, talk just a little bit about our statistics, and, I mean, you reference in here, you know, just a general statement as far as volunteer fire departments are under a fair amount of pressure.
Correct.
And I understand that, but maybe you could just explore that a little further in terms of our statistics as far as response time, and response time or our ability to hire? I mean, I think it might be just helpful to have a little more background.
Yep, so I'll start with the recruitment retention. If you remember from the annual report, typically, we're hiring six to eight firefighters a year, but we're losing that same amount, so we're kind of a net neutral when we do hire. This past year was the first time that we have seen a positive gain, that we only, or we gained two firefighters from what we lost, starting, and that was actually last week, prior to Memorial Week, I had a firefighter contact me that life changed for him, and he needs to step away from a department. So I have two firefighters that are slated to leave in June from the department because of life changes. One is moving to Kansas for a job, the other, there was some family issues that he can no longer participate. So that's something that occurs to us yearly, when that's on the range of, you know, six firefighters a year. So from a recruitment side, yes, we can find bodies to hire firefighters, but on average cost of $10,000 a firefighter to equip and train them, you know, at what point is that a good dollar value that we're getting out of if we're getting a firefighter for, the one that is leaving shortly here has been on less than five years? The other one is right above five years, he's at six years. So that's, you know, that return to investment on that person, is that a good value for what we're getting from them? As far as response times, and this is a good example, that we were just looking at numbers on Friday and then this morning, so our average response time has been roughly about 10 minutes to put an engine on scene for whatever that emergency is, from time of page until they're on scene. For a staff vehicle, chief officer, one of the chief officers arriving, we're there about 7 minutes 30 seconds. What we saw from first quarter of this year to second quarter, when we initiated the duty crew to handle kind of the, reduce the number of bodies coming in for a fire call, we saw a decrease of two minutes in response time for an engine. So we went from that 10-minute range to an eight-minute range for an engine to get on scene for whatever that call was, medical or fires. Does that kind of answer?
Okay.
Thank you.
So this study that you're proposing.
Yep.
How long-term will they go, how far out will they look? Will they look till the city is fully built out and give us estimations based on that for some of the items that are on here, like facilities?
Facilities, I think, are a little bit longer range, but I would say on average, they're looking for a five-to-10-year span on that, and it all depends what you put in the RFP, what you're looking for. Most of them are that five-year window, and then probably a seven-year, some will go 10 years, is what we've seen. I can use Egan as an example, is that there, where they stand today was advanced due to some grant monies and stuff that became available, but they're moving from a paid-on-call to full-time department, which they just became this year, was three years out for them. In other words, they had three years before they would go fully, full-time, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's how long the study, and they did the study two years ago, so it puts them about a five-year window on that for the average, but they will go out longer. The facilities are going to be a long-term, a lot longer term, because obviously, that's quite a bit of money to look at investing in what we, you're building for the future of the city with that.
Mayor?
Yeah, please.
So my only concern at this point is spending $40,000 to $70,000, and I'm not sure that, you know, I'm comfortable even taking the next step to have the, and so I don't know, I don't know how to handle that dilemma in my mind. I realize that we would have to do some sort of study to determine why we would think that you would want to go that way. You'd have to make a pretty strong case for me, but then again, I'm caught because it's like, do I really want to spend the money and not really want to go there?
Mm-hmm.
You know, type of thing, so I don't know if anybody else has an answer, how to handle that, but that's kind of where I'm at. I'm not really willing to go all the way to the very next step. I feel like that we took, like, this baby step, and it was coming as a city when we switched over, and, but I'm not sure that I'm willing to go there until the city's fully built out and we know what we're, what we're dealing with.
Chief, did you have a comment?
I do, to kind of help look at this from the study standpoint, so in 2021's budget, we're slated to replace two engines, and then another engine after that, so we have four engines that are due in the next five years roughly. So with a study, that kind of helps develop or helps say, are we replacing that, are we were going to replace four engines? Because if we change our staffing model, do we need all of that equipment or those apparatus? And same goes with Station 2 is our oldest building in the city, oldest fire station built in '76. It can no longer house the equipment that we have as far as the engine that's there, and the second engine that we keep there was specifically built to fit in that station. So we're kind of, and that's kind of where the study comes into play, is look at our facilities, look at our equipment, and help us give us some guidance for, are we going to replace a full engine? Or an example of what we're proposing for 2021 is to replace one of our engines with, we'll call it a duty crew or a mini pumper, so it's a smaller vehicle, less cost, and is used for the duty crew purpose versus buying a full engine. The save, the dollar amount is about $200,000 difference cost. So if we change our model, that potentially affects a lot of CIP funds further down the road, just if that makes sense. Does that provide a little bit more information of what we're kind of looking for for the study?
It does.
Okay.
So, couple things. One, first of all, I support the firefighters, I support you, you guys do a fabulous job, so my concerns have nothing to do with the wonderful service that this city gets, so. Second, will this study then lay out all these options? I don't, I guess what I'm looking for is, I don't want a train going down the track for One Direction. I would prefer to have options, so that would be, do we continue forward, and what kind of, you know, what the CIP would look like? Or if we make the model change, what would that look like? I mean, will this study go into that much depth of giving the council options on moving forward?
I'll say from using Citiescape Egan's study is that they did put that in options, so option one would be, if you go this route, here's the potential costs of staffing, of equipment, of facilities, and then you as council would make that decision between, you know, option one, option two, and that would all be put into the RFP of what are we looking to do. Some of that would come back to you as far as what are you looking for from us, from the Fire Department? What do you want for a response model? What, you know, what service level do you want us to provide? Do you want us to handle medicals more than what we do today? And do you want a response time faster or greater than, if we're not duty crew, that 10-minute response time for an engine and 7 minutes 30 seconds for a chief officer to get on scene? So those are kind of what that study looks at and helps give some guidance off of that.
Thank you.
And I guess to that point, I mean, if we went ahead with the study, I would like even to look at things, if we have more duty crew, for instance, and they're responding to medical calls, does that alleviate pressure on the police at the same time? I'd want, I would want a real comprehensive look and not just narrow with the Fire Department. I will say, though, that in general, I'm supportive of the idea of a study. If this is a 21-budget item, I'm glad we're getting information, but I don't know if I'd want to make a decision until we're going through the budget process and we have a bigger picture and what, you know, everything is out, you know?
Correct.
$40,000 here, and 40 there, and 40 there, it makes a big difference when we're having revenue issues, so.
I would also add, just alongside of these two comments, I, it would be, if we do choose to proceed with this, I think it's good to have it in the mix as an option as we look at the budget for next year, and I'm in the same place, I don't know if this is a higher priority than something else. So, and we're going to need to make those priority decisions when we actually get into the budget process. It'll be good to have it in there as an option, but as I think about doing a study, I think about a broad range of options, including keeping, doing what we're doing right now. And then maybe there are some ways that other cities or other places have chosen to operate their volunteer fire department in new and exciting ways that are, we haven't adopted yet, and I'm not saying there is that, but I think we do owe it to our community to look at all the options across the whole gamut and make the best, and look at this the best way we can for some period of time. And of course, all that needs to be based on what our service objectives are, and I think that's a good statement that Councilmember Hellier made about, you know, looking at the impact on the Police Department, and I think we also need to look at our ambulance service. I mean, how many people are responding to medicals? And what is that support providing us as we continue to build out? So.
Correct.
I support having this as a item in the materials we get to consider from a budget standpoint. I, as well, am not ready to say tonight unequivocally that we're going to go forward this next year, but I think it's something we do need to be considering at some time here in the next few years, so. Yes, Michelle?
One more clarification. You brought this forward tonight to be able to put into the 2021 budget. As we get into the budget process and we're talking about whether we're going to move it or not, did you kind of have an idea of when, now I know whether you would like the information as soon as possible, but do we have some flexibility as a council to not hinder the Fire Department by, let's say we decide we're not going to do it till 2023? I'm just picking a year, but did you have something in mind that you were, that we need to be cognizant of as far as timelines?
Kind of, I mentioned, you know, from the CIP standpoint, so we have apparatus that do need to be replaced, and what do we do when we're going to replace those? Do we just replace them with the five engines and the two ladders that we currently have, or do we look at and be creative and say, hey, we want to reduce them down and go to four engines and three ladders? Or, you know what I mean? As far as some of the decisions that we can certainly make them today without the study, but the study kind of gives us a little bit better guide map long-term. At some point, we have to do something with our station too as far as that we had with the rains that we've had, the roof is leaking, and I just got an estimate for $4,000 to fix it. And that, you know, it's no different than any other building, it's coming, at some point, we got to look at what can we do with the building? And I agree, you know, from a citywide standpoint, should we be looking at, are we adding on to a facility that's close by that maybe potentially we can put this fire station with that? Maybe it's time to move it from where it sits to a better location, so that's something the study can say. The four locations that we currently have our fire stations at are in their best locations, or you might need to move one for a better response to this area, especially as we grow. We look at, you know, Branchen Farms and State where Station 2 lies, that's a ways to go, but yet it's still the best location today, but as we continue to grow further south on Pilot Knob, does that make sense then? Or with the Cedar Corridor as it continues to grow? So as the city develops, we've got to look at, are our facilities in the right locations?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see that any different than the school district, you know, all the school buildings, at least elementaries are in all their neighborhoods, right? And so it's a similar, similar challenge that they have, and I understand that. I guess my perspective on that are, do, are there other volunteer fire departments, and you might not know this, that recruit within a certain distance of a fire station, but they may not be, they may be residents of a township or another city? Does that make sense? So you, maybe a Farmington, Apple Valley person would, let's say, we, there's a facility on that side of town that's a fire station, but we're recruiting, like, does that make sense? Do people recruit, you know, within your certain mileage but not?
So currently, how, when we look for or put out openings for firefighters and do our recruitment, we use a two-mile radius around that station, and say, if you live within two miles of that, of that station, within a radius.
Yep.
It's not drive time, it's just the radius of the station, then you're eligible to apply.
Okay.
So you could, with Station 2, potentially, you could live in Apple Valley.
Okay.
As far as that goes, and Station 3 runs all the way to the 160th border by Bolero, so we have firefighters that have lived on the north side of 160th and Burnsville Address.
Okay.
So, you know, but the piece with that is, we've asked, you know, can we expand that? But then that detracts from getting a firefighter to the station in a timely manner to respond to a call.
Yeah, I guess, did, if they, if other fire departments go beyond that, two miles, maybe we're getting too much in the weeds, do they ever, it seems very complicated, but do they have, like, tiers of response? Like, we know that the people that are within two miles of this fire station are going to be the first ones there, and then we have the next truck of people that live four miles. Is that, I don't know if that's best practice, I'm just pulling it out of my head, but I don't know if that's...
I know another city next to us, they use time, so they use a five-minute, they have a 10-minute. From a technology standpoint, we use an app called Active 911, so that when a call comes in, the firefighter sees it on their phone, they can hit responding, and then from a staffing standpoint from that station, we know, you know, they know where I live, and they know it's going to take me two minutes to get to the station, so we already have that kind of built in with the app that we use to see where people are coming from.
Right.
If they're, if they're further out, they can hit select delayed, so we know, well, they're probably not going to make the first truck.
Lee, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, because I just think, like, how people live in our city because of 35, sometimes two miles is shorter, right? Or is longer around a city street getting to somewhere versus if someone's on 35, getting over to Station 1 or the one by Fleet Farm.
Councilmember Lee.
I was going to say, since, from our January retreat, this is something that I wanted to see in our cycle this year, is to look for an RFP that studies this. I mean, even though we're very budget conscious right now, our economy's slowing down, we're worried about the dollars, one thing that doesn't seem to be slowing down is our housing market and the growth of our city, and as we're looking to build up 35 and the Cedar Corridors, I, I'm concerned that our apparatus aren't going to be what they need to be for that added density. I don't know where we stand right now with ladder trucks and being able to reach certain-sized buildings. So I mean, for me right now, I, I don't, I don't see the harm in approving or going forward with a request for a proposal to see kind of where those costs come in so that we're prepared for that CIP budget cycle, and we can approve at that point what we want to do at that point. We'll have a little more information about where we stand economically and how much our increase is going to be, but it seems like for guidance tonight, there shouldn't be anything keeping us from at least going out for an RFP.
Right, so am I misunderstanding that these are not very concrete numbers?
Correct, these are just estimates, and kind of the RFP and what we put into that will give a better figure as far as the cost of that.
So it's really two questions, it's, or maybe it's just one you're asking, but I was not understanding, is going through the RFP process, and then we will decide about the budget process for going through the study, right? It's really two questions?
Correct, we'd probably put a placeholder in the budget as far as that range, and then once we get a little bit closer to that, then we formulate the RFP, the RFP for...
So you put it in the budget before going out for RFP? That's what I'm trying to understand is...
Correct. We'd have it in the budget, whether, if it's not approved, then we would withhold, we wouldn't send out for an RFP.
Okay, because what Joshua, I think, was alluding to is that we would go out for RFP now, have a concrete number to put into the budget, and then make the decision.
Okay.
Versus putting a placeholder and then putting RFP, right? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I was thinking, what we could do.
Mayor, another, another option could be that, you know, we're not going to be able to create a RFP out of thin air, it's going to take a little bit of work. You could direct staff to just start to create the RFP. We can come back to that and bring that back to the council later this summer as part of the budget process, and that might be able to determine how elaborate that is. The harder the RFP is to respond to is usually what drives the cost from the vendor's standpoint, and so that would also then give the council another checkpoint to make sure that we're asking the right questions that you want us to be answering.
I think that makes a lot of sense to me, and I also think it helps to have some further dialogue in terms of the other questions you asked in here as far as, you know, what's our outcome desired for certain types of emergencies, and how, pardon me, how do things interrelate with the Police Department and other services? So I think taking that approach makes a lot of sense to me. Other people are shaking their heads, yes? Okay. I think you've got a positive response to that, so we'll look forward to another conversation as we head into middle or later summer.
Okay.
In terms of what the RFP might look like, what some of the details might be, and then we can dialogue that.
All right.
Yes, Wheeler?
Sometimes I get confused on all these, like, other outside entities coming in to tell us what we need and what we should do. I mean, how hard is it to put a team together to figure out exactly what we need? I mean, you're on the front line, I can go into my restaurant and say, here's my wish list, here's what I know I need, and here's what money I have. You know, I don't quite understand, you know, spending $60,000, $80,000 to figure out what we need.
A lot of it has to do with digging at the data, and I'm, I mean, I can put a spreadsheet together, but I'm, in fact, some of the stuff that you've seen reports, I've actually reached out to my son because he's a wizard with spreadsheets. I'm just not that good at it, and that's where kind of the comprehensive study is, somebody that comes and looks externally, and being they've done this in the past, and say, here's the data points that you want to look at, here's what we need to pull from your data, and use that to show kind of where that roadmap is as far as our, obviously, I can say our calls are increasing, as I said in the annual report, you know, we've seen a 9% increase from one year to the next, and we've been averaging that for the past 10 years now. So, I mean, those are the easy points to pull from data, but it's really a deep data dive, and then, kind of, you said, is that the study's going to go to the Police Department and say, your service level for responding to medicals versus the Police Department, which provides a better service? From, and I'll say from my standpoint, and I'll speak for our Assistant Chief Todd Selmner, we're putting in on average 50 hours extra a month than what our normal 80-hour time clock, so we're averaging two to three hours a day extra, because not only are we doing our administrative skills, we're going on calls, whether that's a weekend. So a good example is over this past weekend, we had 22 calls. I happen to be out of town, so Todd responded to roughly 12 calls over the weekend, even though that's his time off, but that's what's expected of us, and that's what we're willing to do. But where do we try to fit that into everything else that we're trying to do?
Right.
So that's kind of where the study comes into play, is that we need that expertise looking at the data and pulling the data and putting it in a format you can, that's easy for all of us to understand. Hope that helps out, and then obviously, they have the... Hope that helps out and then obviously they have the time because we're, I agree of spending money to have this done is not the greatest thing, but at some point we, we're going to have to take a step to get us to that next level or that what's the outcomes going to be for the fire department and the city as a whole.
Thank you, Chief. Before we wrap this up, let me just ask if there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to make a comment regarding this discussion. I don't see anybody internally. Okay, we're good. Any further comments or is that comfortable, council? Looks comfortable. Thank you, Chief, very much. Thanks for all that you guys do. We'll move on now to our next item, which is the Lakeville Area Arts Center Strategic Plan Discussion and we have with us tonight Park and Rec Director John Henon and Joe Massey Archon from the Arts Center. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I am going to have Joe present the strategic plan. Joe did a nice job of gathering up staff, the Arts Center Advisory Committee, the Friends and then the consultants. So this is something that we worked on last year and we'll have Joe give you the highlights of it.
Be great. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to bring this forward. As John had mentioned, we did spend quite a bit of time last year working on a new strategic plan for the Arts Center. This was funded through an operational support grant from the State Arts Board as well as through the Friends of the Arts Center. It was kind of a unique process for us, but it was one that was developed to kind of position the facility to be a little bit more competitive when it comes to grant funding. There's a lot of grant opportunities out there and in order to continue to apply for those, we needed an updated plan. The last facility plan was developed in 2004, so it was a little out of date, but it was a good process. We, we met three different times with the different boards and staff, looking at kind of our current reality of the facility, looking at where we are, looking what potentials are for growth and also kind of looking at some of the, the choke points that we have with particular programs. There are some that we're continually running at capacity. And out of that process, we developed three different directives, so I'll kind of go through those quickly for you. And then we're really just looking for feedback today on any questions that you may have and eventually we'll have to take this to a city council meeting in the future for approval just so that we can put it with the grant applications. So the first of the directives, our goal was to strengthen the community commitment to the art. We're looking at doing that in a number of different ways, both through increased capacity at the facility and I'll give you an example of that, as well as partnering with different businesses and, and community members to kind of expand that excitement and, and the community commitment. So one example I'll give, back in 2015, we did a small expansion to the pottery studio, which allowed us to increase the number of participants by 40%. And we're now kind of hitting that roadblock again where the facility is not able to handle the number of students that are onsite. So we're looking at different ways and actually visiting different facilities in the area, kind of looking at the best practices from our neighboring communities and taking some of those ideas and implementing the easy things now, things that we can immediately do to help make the program better. The next one is deepening the participant engagement, retention and volunteerism. The volunteer side is really a function of the Friends and this is where having kind of this cross between our nonprofit group and our advisory board and staff has really been beneficial. We've been able to implement and we're continuing to work on a new volunteer program for the facility. A good example of that would be our first Thursday pub nights. We've had volunteers coming in to help us sell and serve food at those, which has been able, has put us in a position, we've been able to reduce the number of staff onsite. So that's been a, a really neat program that we're looking to continue to develop. We also have worked on creating a new plan for our marketing. So we pulled together a subcommittee to look at our marketing practices and where our current dollars are being spent and we're looking at implementing that kind of in a different way. So utilizing social media more, reducing a little bit of our print and we've seen some really, really good feedback on that. And the final one is just reaching new participants and expanding programming both at the facility and offsite. As we continue to do that, we are able to serve the community in different ways. Our program coordinator, Carla Hartman, has done a really nice job this last year implementing new programs with contractual instructors that has allowed us to bring in some new mediums. So that's kind of been a neat process so far as well. That kind of covers, I guess, the basics and some of the examples that we've done in year one. We're in the process of heading into year two of the plan and I guess just some feedback would be great, so.
That'd be great, thank you very much. Start with Councilmember Hellier.
Did you guys look at the downtown development guide and how that, you know, some of the suggestions that were in there can play in? Okay, so that was part of this?
Yeah, we actually, before we did the first planning session, we had Dave Olson come in, he did a, a presentation for us regarding the downtown development guide. So we wanted that in place for both boards and staff before we did kind of our current reality. So that, that did play kind of a key part for us.
And what was the reaction or kind of the feedback, you know, looking at whether there's, you know, potential of according the ALC building or some expansion or those type of things? Was there a discussion around that and how did that go?
There was, that's something I think that's been floated out there for, for a number of years. That site is kind of a big question mark, it seems like in everybody's mind. Our discussion kind of revolved around where we're at and kind of what that growth model looks like, what are we able to do and continue to add and what impact will that have on our revenue? A lot of what we do is offset by the new programs we add. So we're kind of trying to use that same model as we look at that. What does that site look like in the future? Can we continue to expand programming in the current facility? You know, where are we at in five, 10, 15, 20 years?
Thank you. Other thoughts, Lee?
Seems like the, the biggest challenge listed is financial. Financial shows up a few times in different bullet points and so the grant opportunities are one way to get money in addition to additional city support, but are there other ways to garner support through endowments or other campaigns that have been thought of through the?
There are and over the history of the facility, the Friends have done a, a great job of, of doing that. Where this year they will be fundraising their $1 million mark for the facility. So they've done that through the Brick Paver Program at the front of the facility and the Art Walk and a number, well countless other improvements that they've done. So I think our goal at this point was to try to finalize a plan of what do we want this to look like? Where does it go and what do we really need so that we can start to plan those processes? Do we need to do another Buy a Chair program? You know, it's that type of thing, but there are other endowment programs out there as well, so.
Other questions? Michelle?
Well, you did a great job on this draft of the strategic plan. So is an option also to be looking at leasing other, I mean, you know, the ALC is right there, but let's, you know, whatever happens, there happens, but is the other option to be leasing in different parts of the community to be able to offer, you know, something to, you know, the northern part, the et cetera? So I think you know where I'm trying to go with it.
That's, so part of that falls under the third directive for us really trying to reach new participants outside of the Arts Center. Part of that has been through programming that we've been offering in some of the park facilities, so we're at a farm park, Steve Mashad, Prairie Lake, we've been utilizing some of those facilities that the city already owns. And we're doing that both for play rehearsals and painting programs and those types of things. So we are trying to get out there more so that it's easier to access what we offer. So I think all of those models and ideas are, we're open to. You know, we, we partner with the school district also for our community band program. That's been incredibly beneficial, I think, for both parties. So those types of partnerships are, are important for us as well.
Please.
I guess I was thinking too is that obviously sometimes things are easier in the spring and summer, but the winter is when all of us are going crazy and have cabin fever and want to dive into a hobby or to start or at least explore one. And, and I know that if you offered, if you had space and offered more pottery classes, you'd be able to sell those. But, so I guess that's what I was kind of thinking is, you know, something that's a little more year round, a little more long-term than temporarily using something because it happens to be available this week.
I think it's, it's definitely something we're open to and can continue to look at. Some of those programs do run year round for us. The painting program at Ritter runs all the time, so we, we do that year round over there. Some of the rest of it is kind of based off of those individual programs. What we've found is there are some challenges with some of our outreach programs, pottery being one of the things that is more difficult because everything has to be fired at onsite twice and it has to be glazed in between. Transportation has been a challenge. Right now with the struggles we're going through with COVID, we are doing a new program where people can pick up pre-bisked pottery, something we haven't done before. They can take that home, glaze it, bring it back, we'll fire it and they can pick it up. So there are some of those outreaches that we're, we're now trying to implement. So I think we are looking at program a little bit different than we did before just because of our current reality, so.
Other comments, questions? I, I did have a question on the bottom of, I think it's the last slide in the one section that talks about a goal of adding two riskier programs. What is that?
It can be any number of things. You know, we, I would have looked at our pub nights as a riskier program when we initially implemented it. We didn't know if that was going to be a program that was going to run. It was something we had never done before and we were able to use the grant to offset it for the first year and found a model that really worked. That's kind of where we're, where we're thinking.
I, I might suggest that riskier for some people might be viewed as risque and, and vulgar and, and I'm not sure that's the message you were trying to send, so creative might be in, in another type of word you could use or something like with an example of pub nights or something like that, that it would add some clarity for some readers. I know I asked a question about it and, and so it would be a suggestion I have, but I appreciate the work that the group did. I think it's an outstanding plan. Of course, a lot of the potential for expansion, which has already been said, relates to finding the money and, but I think we have a phenomenal asset and you've been integral in terms of your leadership to, and a lot of others to make this thing work the way it does, so we're grateful for that. Other comments? Wheeler?
Now I would back him off of that because riskier would have a guy like me be like, what are you going to do? Like, let me see this. He's going to be off, you know, so you're 50/50 on that one, right?
I will just go to the.
Visualizing Ghost, that movie, you know?
We will move on and go to the public and see if we have anyone in the audience or anyone online that might like to comment on this particular topic. I am not seeing anyone, so council, any final comments? Otherwise, thank you, Joe and John for your work and the whole team's work on this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item number five, the Sustainable Purchasing Policy and Green Step Cities Update and we have Public Works Director Omi with us. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. So I got a little, short little presentation for you to, for this item. Again, the purpose of this item is to give the city council nothing on where we're at with the Green Step Cities initiatives and review the draft sustainability policy that's in your packet and the Living Streets Resolution is also included as well and then maybe talk about some next steps. So just some background on Green Step Cities itself, the purpose of the program is it's a Minnesota program, is voluntary, recognize what communities are doing in terms of sustainability and, and being environmentally conscious and to help cities achieve those goals and through systematic implementation of the, these best management practices and then also try to meet some of their quality of life goals as well. So there is, there's 29 best practices in the Green Step Cities Program and there's approximately 175 action steps that the cities can take to meet their goals. And some of those include building efficiency standards, improving their comprehensive plan for environmental standards and livable communities, design of natural resources, fleet efficiencies, stormwater management, community engagement and then community resilience to, to climate change as well. So those are the areas that in general that the, the cities can pick from to try to improve and meet, meet their, their goals in terms of best management practices. So there are five steps in the Green Step Cities that communities can achieve and one through five, the, the build a community interest and adopt a, and, and adopt a resolution to show that you're interested and the, and show the community that you're, you're moving towards these initiatives. So that's basically where every community starts off. This next step is implementing eight of those 175 practices that are identified in the, in the program as well and then moving on to step three is implementing another eight of those, of those initiatives, best management practices as well to a higher standard. And then moving on, step four and five is more measuring what you're doing in terms of, and benchmarking some of those goals initiatives. Also, step number four, there's another, I think, five best management practices that you have to adopt as well and then again, five, step five is you're showing improvement on each of those categories and, and management areas. So that's basically the program itself. For the city of Lakeville, the program was initiated in November of 2017 with the adoption of a resolution stating that the city's interest in participating in the Green Step Cities. From there, staff has worked on implementing some of those initiatives and in goals and best management practices and we have currently achieved step two in, in the, in the, the Green Step Cities Initiative. And as council may recall, back in September of last year, we did visit with the, the council on getting some direction on, on getting to step two and potentially moving on from there. So wanted to talk to you about that a little bit. So again, step two has been achieved. These are eight of the categories, best management practices that the city has, has worked on to achieve and those are adopted here. A lot of, some of these items are already, are in our comprehensive plan in our codebook. So a lot of those things, we're just checking the box that we, we've initiated those and have, have already, are already working on those things. So moving on, so tonight we'd like to talk briefly about trying to get to step three. So there are five action items or best practices that the staff has identified that we'd like this city council to consider. The first one is the Living Streets Resolution that's included in your, in your background. Living Streets is basically a combination of, of a complete streets initiative and environment and in a, a green streets initiative are, it basically shows the combination of complete streets, which is the, the mobility component to a street and trying to address mobility of all, all, all groups of people from walkers, the bikers to, to motorcyclists and that has more of an engineering component to it. And then the Green Streets, Green Streets Initiative is more of the environmental component, water quality, water quantity considerations and in trees and boulevards and treating that, treating that, treating that runoff. So we're, what we're talking about is combining those, those two practices into one, it's the Living Streets Initiative in, within that resolution and a lot of those things that are in that resolution are already, the city has already implemented or, or working on and working with developers and those type of things. And the second item is Sustainability Purchasing Policy. This is just a guide to selecting good, basically a good practice to selecting environmentally friendly things for the, for the community and minimizing environmental impacts and a lot of those things we already completing, doing, but now we're just codifying a lot of those practices that we're already doing within the, within the community and within the city itself. And then there's three other action items that, best practices that would have to be included in to get the city to step three. One is benchmarking the community engagement and that what we're looking at there is addressing or identifying or helping local businesses with buying local initiatives. So one of the things that we're looking at or have already done is working with Lakeville residents or Lakeville Restaurants.com and linking, you know, the, what, all the restaurants and all the, some of the other facilities that we have here in the community. and linking, you know, the, what, all the restaurants and all the, some of the other facilities that we have here in the community to the city and just supporting our local initiatives, especially during this COVID era. So and then the green businesses development, that's basically recognizing any and all businesses within the community that have green initiatives or have received awards from county or federal agencies recognizing them as sustainable or green initiatives. So one example is waste management has had some success in that. I believe that they've had some recognized awards in that areas in terms of sustainability and reuse. So that's one of the things that we'd like to pursue in that category. The third one, the final one, is the climate adoption and community resilience. That one is we're working with the Fire and Police Department on what we're already doing in terms of emergency management practices, you know, how we're addressing potential hazards within the community, looking at what potential impacts we're going to be receiving from climate change over the years. And then, you know, working with our other officials identifying those things in this plan. So that's basically the five items that we'd like to look at to get to step three of the Green Step Cities. And then moving on, if the council wanted to move forward to get to step four, there's a little bit more intense documentation that has to go along with it. There's five basic additional metrics, best practices that would have to be achieved as well. And then we'd have to report to Green Step Cities, MPCA, our, what we're doing annually to achieve and sustain those practices as well. So that's a little bit more intensive, would be a lot more staff time involved annually to maintain that step four level. And that's basically the background that I have for where we're at with the Green Step Cities. And I stand for any questions that the council may have.
Hey, thank you very much. Questions? Lee?
So I guess, thank you, Mr. Omi. I appreciate the package of initiatives that could be taking us to step three. I, when I think of sustainability, I always think of it as being environmental, economic, and social. And in the social realm, I'm glad you mentioned it. I couldn't find it in here, but I thought it was lacking the local purchasing element of it and just that mentality and education around purchasing local. But you didn't mention as part of the Sustainable Purchasing Policy, which I would like to see as part of the Sustainable Purchasing Policy. Where applicable, purchase locally. I mean, that's going to impact and help both the environmental and the economic sides of sustainability. So that was just one thing that I want to make a comment on.
Okay, thank you.
I had a couple of questions for you. So for G and H on the purchasing, are those things related to washable and reusable? Are we rethinking that in post-COVID world about how we're going to sanitize things we're going to use over and over versus purchasing biodegradable forks, cups, that kind of stuff, the corn-based products?
So Mayor, City Council members, so this addresses what our current practices are for some of the departments within the community, like at the water treatment and the central maintenance facility. We are already using reusable silverware and dishes and things like that. So we wanted to, you know, encourage that type of use instead of throw away material on a normal lunch base or break time period. So that's something that, you know, we can, we'd like to at least encourage for staff to continue with.
Well, I totally get that. I'm just saying, if we're going to be purchasing products for staff to use, whether it's plates or forks, I mean, at least in the next two years, we want to think about biodegradable fork versus someone washing a fork and putting it, you know what I'm saying? Like just versus like, I guess if you're bringing something from home and eating your fork and then bringing it home, like that's different. But there's something to throw out there. It's not like, I don't know, I'm not a CDC person. I'm just, it just stood out to me.
Public health safety is a pretty high priority right now.
Well, I just know that like grocery stores are limiting the use of reusable bags right now because of potential. So I'm just like, in my mind, that's where my mind is on that.
That's a good point. Well, I think, you know, the tenets of a lot of conservationists is reduce, reuse, and recycle. So, you know, we try to reduce the amount of stuff that we use first. And if you can do that by then reusing our utensils and plates, that are, they are sanitized. It's not just run through the sink and put back in the shelf. I mean, our buildings do have dishwashers that we use, so.
My office where I work does not. And at the same point, then, I don't know anything about the cleaning products that are related here. Are we concerned that, you know, some sort of green soap is not going to do the same type of cleaning that the other, something EcoLab might be selling?
Mayor, City Council members, I, you know, that's a good point to, you know, we're always going to look towards the CDC at this time in our COVID era. So that's, would trump anything that would be listed in here in terms of green or other products that we potentially would use.
And then I, just two more questions.
Please.
There's, in the resolution, we talk a lot about transit and promoting that. This is kind of part of that, but have we had discussions about what Metro Transit or, you know, what they see the future of that being? I mean, granted ridership's down, right, because of community right now. But I mean, my sense is people are going to be, at least for the near future, saying, I'm not going to jam myself on 50 people a bus. I'm going to sit in traffic because that's the trade-off. And so what have we, this probably doesn't really fit this discussion, I guess, but how is that going to impact? And are we thinking about that? Is that part of this? Maybe I'm getting a different discussion.
No, and we haven't necessarily had it in this discussion. We have had it in discussions in terms of how much money we're getting through gas tax usage and those regards. And I know engineering and finance have been reviewing those numbers. And those will color our discussions as we move forward with budget moving forward.
And then my last question, I have concerns about the green streets. I think it's great. I know the mayor likes to ride his bicycle and a lot of people do, and we have great trails. I would just think about when we're doing major road construction, how we can best use a right-of-way to not narrow lanes but also include bike access. I would not be in favor of, when I lived in Edina, they just decided to take away about 10 feet of lanes to dedicate to bikes, and I would not go down that path. But if we can include it in the right-of-way, that's, sounds great.
I think that's one of the privileges we have as an expanding city and that we started relatively recently, is that we've got right-of-way that we can work with and we've built in the ability to expand some of our roadways, like Highway 50 right out here. That can expand to four lanes without impacting the trails. And unfortunately, there are cities, whether it's Edina or Minneapolis, that have reduced road lanes to be able to put the trails in, and it's created its own set of challenges. And fortunately for us, we haven't had as much. We do have a couple older areas of the city that I do think we have a few challenges that we need, we probably need to figure out over time. But that's part of the comprehensive planning we do and looking toward the long term. The one question I had about this is, so we've been at step two, and we want to move to step three. As you've described, other than the policies we need to approve to move to step three, I mean, is our behavior pretty substantially right now aligned with step three? I mean, I guess I haven't, I didn't read in here that there's a lot of change other than us approving these policies that we need to make, and then hopefully we're aligned with step three. So it's not a huge cost matter for us.
Right. We, from a staff's perspective, Mayor, we try to be as much cost neutral in these policies we have. And we amplify it or identify things that we've already are doing in the community as well and to be sustainable in our existing practices. And we're tweaking some other practices and enhancing them, but not having a huge cost impact.
Cost impact, yeah. And I do appreciate all that we've been doing.
I was, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Mayor and Council, if you remember in 2017, we brought this forward. That was one of the reasons we did bring it forward is that we felt like we weren't getting the recognition and the awareness that we are doing a lot of good things already. And so getting to steps one and two was very easy, was just documenting exactly what we were already doing. Step three is just putting in more formal practices, again, things that we're already doing. So to Mr. Omi's point, we haven't really spent a whole lot of extra money. We're not in quote-unquote buying our next step. This is just recognizing and documenting what we're already and getting credit for it.
Thank you very much. Michelle, did you have?
I do. So you semi answered how you selected the categories that you came up with. In the reporting system, I guess to get acknowledgement from this organization to be a green city, do you have to use their terminology?
To a certain extent, yes. Yeah, I mean, you have to-
Do we have to call our resolution a Living Streets Resolution?
They specifically identified you can either go with a green street, a complete street, or a living street policy.
And so you, basically, they're telling us how to label it. Okay. Because the thing is, is it needs an education to the community. What they don't understand is that we're not going off in some sort of tangent and-
People may interpret words differently.
Well, exactly, but they also might think that that's costing us a lot of money. But if it were labeled something differently, if we were having a resolution for what we already do, you know, and labeled a little bit differently, then, you know, it's a little more palatable to a lot of our community. But that's not possible, is basically what you're saying, to be able to have this designation. So I'm not against having living streets. What I'm trying to avoid is political upheaval sometimes. People just take it, the terminology are triggers. And people don't listen past a trigger word to what it is that we're already doing and taking place. Now, in some ways, you described that we're doing complete streets, correct?
Some aspects of that in certain developments, like branching farms, that's more of a complete street.
So if we were to take a complete street resolution, you're saying it would cost the city money because we'd have to redo some streets within the city?
If, well, if we wanted to retrofit our community to accommodate the complete streets, yeah. That would be a very costly undertaking.
To take on, to approve a resolution would mean that we were going to change something, then, is what you're saying.
Well, the resolution that we have here in the packet is, under circumstances, under development-type of situations, under different scenarios, the city would look at implementing the Living Streets policy in those specific situations. It's not saying that for every new street that's coming in with a new development or every street that we reconstruct, we're going to live up to that Living Streets threshold. It's basically on a case-by-case basis that we'd be looking at implementing that Living Street policy.
So if you, if you had a complete streets resolution, we wouldn't have to necessarily do anything differently to our current streets, et cetera, then, under that, how you would just explain that? Because you're saying it's on a case-by-case basis.
Right. For any, for the green street, for the complete street, or for the living street, it'd be under a case-by-case basis, that we would look at implementing those practices, those initiatives, those specific requirements in the resolution.
Thank you.
Please.
Were you, I was, go ahead.
I was just going to try to clarify that the "Therefore Be It Resolved" section of the resolution is basically saying that we're supporting the principles. We're not bound to do that on every project, but that we will strive to work towards those principles in those projects.
Correct. And we will look at it on a case-by-case basis. This is, it makes sense to implement some or all the Living Streets practices in that specific project.
And for the most part, as we're developing streets, we are already doing much of that work.
We're doing some of that work, yeah, exactly. And again, it depends upon, you know, initiatives that the community feels are important and what the developer thinks his development would, envisions his development to look like. You know, we need some, we need support from everybody to move the Living Streets policy along for each project.
Just to follow up to, the Living Streets didn't make sense to me. I don't like the word because it makes it feel like the street is alive or a living thing. And when we're, if we're looking for recognition for a Green Step Cities initiative, to me, it makes more sense to have a green street to match sort of the language of the Green Step, you know. But-
Mayor?
I'd rather have it be vague at low.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Omi, but I think the Living Street gives us more flexibility than the other designations. Is that correct?
It does. It includes some of the implementation items that are in the Green Streets and are in the Complete Streets. It's just, it basically combines a lot of the things, initiatives, or each of those other policies or practices in each of those other different areas. So it is more flexible.
I guess we were trying, we know that in some places, some of these terms have some loaded connotations. And we felt like the Living Streets designation did give the city the most flexibility and did not lock us into anything that we just, wasn't something that Lakeville was going to support.
And is representative of what we're already doing?
Exactly.
Yeah, but you'd have to read the document to get there. That's the sad part, you know. So somehow or another, our communications department's going to have to work on what does that mean and continue that throughout our history of always updating our community on what does it mean? It's, you know, because it's a little vague to determine what it means.
We can try to clarify.
And we might, yeah, we might want to look at the title too, because I do wonder if the way the title reads and it says ongoing support and intent to utilize Living Street principles. The fact that it says intent to utilize suggests that we're not doing it yet. And may raise the question, what's that going to cost us? So it might be, I don't want to wordsmith it now, but it might be that we might want to just take a look at-
And staff can reach out to MPCA too and see if there's other language that we can use instead of Living Streets.
So council, any other questions on the presentation or the draft policy or resolution at this time? Otherwise, you as staff can take our input and continuing to, continue to work on this. I will go to the public to see if there's any further comments. I know we had one comment earlier in Citizen Comments. And I don't know if there's anyone online that would want to make a comment or if there's any other comments here in-house. We follow the same rules at Citizen Comments if someone would like to speak. Is there any further comments? Come on up, Chris.
Once again, Chris Erickson, I just, I just want, very supportive of the new compost site and the electric car hookup and things like that. The only comment I would have is that the things in trying to, in trying to look at what you've already done to see how it fits within the Green Steps to be able to achieve different steps, we need to do more than that. And the biggest thing is going to have to be reducing our dependence on fossil fuels. So those are going to be the hard steps. And hopefully, it won't be an issue of costing us money, but saving us money by converting it to other resources. So that's my only-
Thank you for, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
I love the composting site too. Thank you very much. Okay, any further comments, council, at this point?
No, good job.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. And next up, we've got our 2021 Street Improvement Project update, which is why you're still standing here.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. So it's that time of year, again, where we start thinking about projects for twenty, for next year already. So we wanted to just visit with the council briefly on what our thoughts are for the next year's street project, and then get some feedback and some direction on where we think we, or where the council thinks we should be going for next year's project. So as the council may recall back, in February this year, we, staff visited with the council at the work session and talked about our pavement management program, and suggested some potential changes to that program. And one of them was try to implement more street mill and overlay projects. The city has, City of Lakeville has mainly relied on street reconstructions here over the last, say, ten years for our pavement management program. And right now, our pavement management program is showing there's a lot of need for more mill and overlay projects. There's, we've identified twenty, or fifty-seven miles worth of streets that could potentially be overlaid at this time. And staff's thought here is that instead of letting some of those streets go to, continue to degrade to the point where street reconstruction is necessary, we thought it might be advantageous for the city to look at more, doing some more mill and overlay projects, specifically next year, instead of the street reconstruction project. So there's some benefits that we've identified to change and delay, postpone the street reconstruction project for next year. Next year's street reconstruction project is about six miles worth of streets. Just as a background, it's, it's in your package. It's a, two neighborhoods south of Hundred Seventieth Street, on both sides of Flagstaff Avenue, south of Dodd. And it's in a residential area. But that, that area, what staff is thinking about is taking the funds that were allocated for that street project and using that towards a new, a mill and overlay project. We can do a lot more miles worth of streets. We can address some of the streets that are in the mill and overlay category and not have them degrade to our street reconstruction category in the near future. We can, obviously, we will do a lot more miles of streets than the six miles that we would be doing next year. And then we would anticipate that we can do this project in-house with our current staff levels that we currently have. And we would propose not to assess that mill and overlay project, too. We're a little concerned with what the economy potentially would be next year. So moving to a mill and overlay project, instead of assessing for a street reconstruction project, what typically is in the range of five to six thousand dollars per household, might be advantageous for the, for the community to look at. So with that, that's the brief background on where we're at. If the council would want to move towards a mill and overlay project for next year, we, we haven't identified a scope of the project, or what streets we wanted to do at this time. This is just basically at a high level at this time. But during the budget process, or during a future work session, we'd bring a scope of, scope of work back to the council for consideration at that time.
Okay. Thanks for putting this in front of us. Thoughts, Council, earlier?
Lot of thoughts. I think this is a good idea. I guess I had not been able to have a chance to drive over to look at these roads. But the idea of investing in, on a lower level, cost-wise, to prevent reconstruction of the road seems to make sense. I think we've been talking about this, that there's gonna be a cliff at some point where we get to do a little things differently. So that seems to make sense. Two questions. The first, why would we not assess the property like we would for a reconstruction? The reason I say that is it's been pretty consistent for the last decade, that when there's a road project, there's an assessment. So I just wanted to know why we wouldn't do that. And then the other part is, is this also part of the presentation that you gave us about the new technique for-
Reclamite?
That reclamite, the sealing, is that included in, in the 21 project?
Mayor, City Council members, so the, your second question, no, it's not included in our, the scope of work for, that is identified here. We're looking at bringing that back during the budget process and trying to identify some monies to implement or start a reclamite program here within the city. And point number, the first one was the assessment. The question is, so mill and overlays, they're, they typically don't last, they won't last as long as a street reconstruction street. So typically, you get about maybe twenty-five years out of a, a street project before you have to have some more major maintenance on it. Typically, we would get maybe between ten and fifteen years for an overlay. Our assessment practice is, you know, we're assessing, I think, between eight and ten years out for that assessment period. So basically, you know, if people keep that assessment on their, on their taxes, over the length of the project, you can almost, you know, have two, two mill and overlays back to back. So theoretically, a property owner can be assessed twice and, you know, have a continuous assessment for a street. So we wanted to think about that a little bit. And then also, our past practice, the last two mill and overlays that we have done, we haven't assessed for as well. So there's been some past practice where we haven't assessed for, for mill and overlays in the past. And this year being an example of that, in our miscellaneous project, we're overlaying about a mile and a half of streets, and we're not assessing for that project. So that's kind of consistent with what we're talking about here.
Other comments? Lee?
So are you saying that we've only mill and overlaid a couple times in the history of Lakeville?
So, we, we are overlaying, like I said, a mile and a half worth of streets this year. And then I think the last one, we mill and overlayed in twenty, like fourteen or fifteen, was the last time we did another mill and overlay in the residential area. So it's, it's not, it hasn't been a standard practice that the city has undertaken. For years, we've seal-coated streets over and over and over again. And that's basically equivalent to doing mill and overlays as well. So to try to keep the streets together. So we've gone away from, from those seal coats now. And we like to look at that reclamite, and then also doing more mill and overlays as well.
And then my other question was about the program to neighborhood that would be delayed. Is, how would that neighborhood be managed in the meantime?
Right. So the, I mean, what our thought process here was, we would only delay it maybe one or two years. We, the city staff would still manage the potholes that are out there. We would patch any, any deficiencies in those roads to make sure that they're, they're passable, they're drivable, those type of things. So, you know, the level of service in those neighborhoods are, is not gonna change. The quality of street is, you know, is suspect. But we'll definitely keep the streets together until we have a reconstruction project in that neighborhood.
I'll just add to that. I think that, I mean, there's, there's, there's other neighborhoods of streets that we have that come after this set. So it's not like we just had one year on the plan. We had five years' worth on the plan.
Correct.
And so everybody's gonna move out a year or two years. And I'm, I mean, it makes sense to me to take a look at the reclamite process, if that's terminology. And it also makes sense to me to look at doing the mill and overlays. But I think it's, I'd like us to take a look at a both-and, or an all-and, in contrast to one. And I'm, my fear is that, being a long-term residence here, resident here, I don't want to get back into the same problem we had, that we started with ten, eleven years ago, when we started fixing streets. Because we didn't do anything. I mean, that's a bit of an overstatement. But I mean, we didn't do a lot. And so, you know, my street, my residential street was forty years till it was redone. And that, we can't do that again. And so we need a strategy that will work. And I think the mill and overlay strategy makes sense, from what I know, to help get us farther down the road in terms of the streets. But at the same token, we've got other streets that haven't had that, that we have to be taken care of. And we don't need to do ten miles a year, like we have been, maybe. But maybe we should be doing three miles a year or some, I mean, I don't know what that number should be. So we kind of, we have a balancing act. And then alongside that, I do like your sensitivity to the fact that I think economically, next year's gonna be challenging. And so if we can identify a strategy that we're not putting ourselves into some pretty significant special assessments for people, I think our residents would appreciate that. So as we look at this, I'd appreciate looking at a multifaceted approach, even if it doesn't all start next year. It's kind of, as we look out five or ten years, how might this start to fit together so it ends up in a place that we're handling everything?
Right. That's, I appreciate your comment there, Mayor, because that's what we're currently working on right now.
Okay, great.
Is that strategy, and updating the pavement management program to reflect what you just said.
Okay. Super.
So we'll, and we'll bring that back to the city council through the budget process.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Well, and just to expand on that, and maybe this is what you meant, Mayor, could we consider a different special assessment tool for managing streets so that the special assessment is a lower percentage, so that it-
For mill and overlays, you mean?
Yeah, correct. For mill and overlays, so that it doesn't end up being the scenario that you explained, but allows us to potentially do more streets at a time and keep up with pavement management.
And the council's always, you know, has the prerogative of revisiting the assessment policy that we have, and adjusting it accordingly, if you want to look at making modifications like you just had mentioned.
I don't hate that idea.
That's always a great, that's a very Minnesota term.
As you say, it's a starting place, you know.
Council member, vote.
So my comment to the council would be, I would rather have the big-picture discussion, the full one that the mayor was talking about before I even consider this, because I would probably go, could go to the extreme to say, okay, just don't do any street improvement projects in 2021, and save everybody on their taxes, because we'd be raising them anyway to pay for the mill and overlay, but the whole city would be paying for it. And, and/or, you know, versus the street assessments. So, so I guess I, me personally, I would like to go back to the discussion that we were gonna have, that we talked about in February. We wanted, you know, kind of like spreadsheets and-
The big picture.
More, you know, more analysis of where, what this change would cause and do before I could even, but I appreciate the suggestion, and I, I like the idea. But because you've got that other thing sitting out there, I really want the whole picture.
So, like, was 202nd Street that they're working on now, is that, is that a reconstruction, or is that a mill and overlay? Where it has the curbs, the gutters, and the street?
You mean in the neighborhoods, huh, 202nd?
Yeah. Up by the lake. By Lake Marion.
Kensington.
Yeah, that's a reconstruction.
It's a reconstruction. Okay. And they did the utilities and stuff?
So overlay is, is you leave the curbs?
Yep. You leave the curbs, you leave the asphalt that's out there. You mill off a portion of the asphalt, and you just pave over the top of that. Basically, it's a new driving surface. It adds a little bit of structural integrity to the pavement section, but it's mainly your drivability, and then addressing the, the surface deterioration on the pavement.
It's like the scraper to pedicure. You know, you just get the top layer off.
Hey, other, other, other comments? I am gonna go to the audience and see if we have any comments on this matter this evening. I'm not seeing anybody inside here. Okay, so we're good. Hopefully, you've got some good information to consider as we, I know we'll be talking more about this in a few months, so. Look forward to hearing a bigger picture.
Okay, very good.
Thanks. Thank you. I do want to ask Council, we've been going about an hour and a half. This next item's about fifty, probably gonna be about fifteen minutes or so. And then maybe after that, we'll take a quick break. That sound good? Okay. We'll move into our next item, which is our 2020 bond issuance update. And we have Finance Director Geraldine Erickson with us this evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. Good to see all of you again. This item, well, before I forget, we do have Tammy Amdahl, our municipal advisor with Northland Securities. She is available online. So if there are any questions that you want to ask of her, she is available to respond to them. So this item, we are bringing back a couple of things that we've talked about previously in April, the 2020A bond issuance, which is funding the 2020 street recon project, and actually, quite a few projects. And the council had expressed some concern about the tax levy for next year, and the debt service levy. And it was about 4.5% estimated. So we went back to the structure of the bond, and we also looked at some of our cash balances in our debt service funds. And we were able to make some adjustments there and reduce the levy. But specifically, with the 2020 bond issuance, and yes, and again, these are estimates, until we actually go out for issuance of the debt, you know, we'll know more at that time. But based on estimates, we had reduced the levy by reducing the amount that we would be paying with the first debt payment, principal payment in 2022. But we reduced the debt service levy from about $929,000 down to about $548,000. So that was pretty significant. And so that brought the estimated debt service levy down to about 2.56% increase from 2020 to 2021. And we'll continue to go through the process and evaluate how our special assessment collections coming in, and how do they impact future years and so forth. So we still have some work to do. But I wanted to first get some feedback on your, I guess, some thoughts on changing the bond structure to accommodate a lower payment for a debt service levy in 2021, as well as then a lower payment, first principal payment in 2022. There is a slight cost to it, you know, an estimated about $45,000 in interest over the life of the bond by delaying that first, or reducing that first payment. So, so any thoughts on that?
Okay. Council thoughts? I'll just start off. I appreciate the creative work that you folks have done on this. And I, I think that we are gonna be in a time coming up here that we need to be very sensitive to how we're handling this. And so I think this is, there's some good creativity here that, that can be really helpful. I have a comment about the energy-saving products, projects, but we'll go to that in a minute.
Do you see in the financial markets of just kind of outlooking, what this COVID's gonna do to us? Do we need to be more nervous about 2021, or more nervous about 2022?
Tammy, would you be available to provide a response to that question?
Thank you. I believe you can hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Tammy Amdahl with Northland Securities. I think the question was, as far as rates and concern in the longer term versus the near term. Certainly, in the near term, we are still at historically low interest rate environment. As far as 21 and 2022, the concern, or the cautionary tone is correct. We don't know, of course, where rates will be. I think with respect to, and I was listening to your earlier conversation on assessments, as far as the ability and the repayment of those assessments may be a concern going into 2021 and 2022. But as far as rates are concerned, at least at this point, and the timing of the 2020 issuance, it is very likely that you are going to get historically low interest rates, again, on these 2020A bonds.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy, for your comment.
I think your question, though, is also more concerned about what does our revenue picture look like in '22 to be able to make any type of payments?
Pushing, pushing off, yeah.
Yeah. And then pushing off the payments. Is there a possibility that 21 might actually be, we might be in a better financial position, and so maybe we should not delay that, whereas things could get much worse, is what I think would probably-
That's where my mind was at. Like, we're-
So not to-
21's really quick.
So not to delay that- So not to delay that first payment or make a full payment in 2022 versus reducing it now for the levy in 21?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Council, so one thing to remember, and it's always after remind ourselves this a lot of times, is there's a year lag in when the city kind of captures the growth that is going on in the community. So values for 2021, um, are set on January 1st of 2020.
Oh, they're set now?
So we're capturing the growth. And when we establish the budget for next year, for 2021, we're basically capturing the growth that occurred in 2019. So we're still seeing, so when we set the 2022 budget, we'll be capturing the growth that happened through the most of this year, which as of now is it's still been pretty, pretty good. So, um, now, obviously, the amount of taxes you collect is only based on the amount that you levy. But that's always spread amongst the growth in the community. So the bigger the growth, the, the less pain that any increase has on individual taxpayers. So we're a little bit, it's a lagging indicator for a certain, to a certain extent, but the 2021 budget is basically capturing all the growth, the houses that were completed in 2019, if you want to think about it that way.
Basically, year 23 is where we might, where we might be more concerned.
One more year out.
Okay, so maybe then maybe this plan makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, okay. That's good, that's helpful.
Which plan makes sense?
To, to just defer in, into 21?
22.
What's presented, what's presented right here?
What's presented here?
Yep.
The second scenario.
Yeah, yes, which lowers the tax levy for
2021.
2021.
Yep.
Right?
Okay, so I just felt like the argument got made to just stick with the game plan of the, the first one and hold off on using that type of advantage, uh, or type of tool for years in the future. Cause I, I mean, otherwise we could end up getting stuck in a pattern where we're just going to keep doing this, keep doing this too. And, you know, um, I realize $45,000 isn't a lot, but it, you know, in the scheme of things, might as well save it now in case you need to use the tool later. So I don't know. That's just my thought process. I, I listened to everything and all of a sudden I thought, well, I'm, I'm back to the
It doesn't preclude us from being creative in how we put together terms for whatever debt we might issue next year.
Right.
And we don't know, we know what rates are now. We don't know what they are in two years.
Right.
That, that's probably the scary part.
Yeah. They're not going to get a lot lower. We've been saying that a long time though, but.
I mean, they are giving us money now, right?
Okay.
Other comments, questions? Otherwise, I'm going to ask for public comment on this if there's any, is anyone here that would like to speak to this topic? Now would be the time, and we handle it just like citizen comments. Does anybody like to make a comment this evening? Okay, and is there anyone online?
There are quite a few online, but if they have something, they should just speak up now.
Okay. So I'm not hearing anyone. Um, I support this plan. I think the creativity is, um, really helpful. So.
If I can mention one other thing about the 2020A, it is the, um, one portion of the bond is, um, using tax abatement authority to issue the bonds. And so, um, we have scheduled for June 15th to actually hold the public hearing. It identifies the five parcels, um, that are included in your agenda packet as the parcels that the, the abatement will be assigned to. The taxes are not abated on the, those properties at all. They're going to pay the same taxes that they would. It's just the authority that we're using. We have to identify a number of parcels to, um, calculate up to the amount that we would be about 80, $85,000 a year associated with the arenas parking lot project. Now, we don't anticipate having to use that authority to actually levy because we have agreements in place with the Lakeville Hockey Association, the Figure Skating Club to provide the funding for that. But it is in the event that, that funding is not there, that we would have the authority to, um, have a levy to collect the funds to make the debt payment. So, so that public hearing is scheduled for June 15th. And also on the evening of June 15th, we'll be bringing back a resolution for you to authorize us to go through the process to actually, um, issue the debt. And then we'll come back in July again.
Okay, sounds great.
And the second part
I think we, well done. We have a question from council member Lee.
We had a small conversation prior to this about all that. With a public hearing, what might one of those parcels come to council with? What kind of concerns might one come to the council with? In relation to that. It doesn't sound like there's any
No impact on their taxes.
At all.
Right.
So there's, there's, this is just a matter of signing some paperwork so that
We have the authority to
So I think the underlying question is why do we have to have a public hearing?
And I'm going to have Tammy jump in on this one.
Mayor, Council, Tammy Amdal again from Northland. It is the way the legislature set up this authority. Um, you have the ability, um, and this speaks to your authority to issue the bonds, that you have to identify those parcels. The tax statements for those parcels will be absolutely no different as a result of this action. It's just the way the legislature set it up. The reason these parcels were identified by city staff is the city taxes generated from these five parcels is equivalent to the principal that will be repaid on the bonds. That's as far as the council member made the comment on the paperwork and, you know, dotting the i's, crossing the t's. That's why they were identified. They, um, if they come and they have every right to ask if they notice their parcel, because their parcel number will be printed in the public hearing notice. That is the reason they are included. If they have policy concerns, really their policy concerns should be with the project that's being financed, not the fact that their property is included because there is no direct financial impact to them at all.
Mayor, council?
Yes, please.
I might just add, and correct me if I'm wrong, Geraldine or Tammy, but the reason we're issuing the bonds in this manner is because this project did not qualify for general obligation debt. Isn't that correct, Geraldine?
We had explored some options that required assessments as well. And this, um, I think this was the most cost-effective authority that we could use, um, to issue these bonds.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so it sounds like the public hearing will be an educational opportunity to me.
And the public hearing is not just for the parcels affected, like Tammy said, it would be for anybody who might want to talk about it. And in some places, when you would, uh, issue abatement bonds, you do abate the taxes and those people, that the portion of their taxes does go toward lowering their, their tax burden. That's not the case in this, and so that's probably why the legislature set up the public hearing process in that form.
Okay, please continue.
Okay. The second bond issuance that we will potentially be considering would be the 2020B bond issuance associated with the Energy Savings Improvement Project. And we've had a number of discussions about that, whether, the improvements that would be made to the arenas, the Lakeville Arenas, both sites, the Ames as well as the Hozie. Would it go through a park referendum process? But if we don't go forward with that, would we consider some other, um, debt mechanism to pay for the projects? And what we anticipate is that we would use a similar authority, a tax abatement authority to, um, issue debt. And with that, we would end up identifying, um, a much larger group of properties to, um, generate the same amount of tax to cover the principal, similar to what we're, we would be doing with the 2028. It would just be on a larger scale. Along with that project, um, we will be working with the school district, and we've had some conversation with them already at the arenas board meetings about entering into an agreement to fund half of the, the debt levy associated with this project.
Okay, thank you very much. The one question I had on that, and maybe you kind of referred to this already, is, um, I think in, at least at one point in time, we had some, um, possibility that the legislature might help to support this project. And I'm not sure what the status of that is or, I know, obviously they didn't pass anything, but they're going to be coming back for a special session. And I just was curious if there was still anything potential in that realm to happen, so we wouldn't have to do this.
I would defer to Administrator Miller if he knows of anything.
Uh, Mayor, council, you're correct. And I believe it was in the House version of the bonding bill that was, um, not approved. It included some money, but it was only around a million dollars. None of the proposals I've seen have been close to the eight million. So if we were fortunate enough to get that, um, it would just lower the cost that we would bond for. And then that would lower the cost between both us, the city and the, the school district.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments on this?
I just still don't know if this is like, I get all, everything in the leaky roof and I get all this stuff. Again, this is a lot of money when we're staring down other potential costs. And so I just have, I have long-term concerns about what the right solution is. At the same time, this has been on park referendum discussion, um, which is unsolved. So.
And I do believe we had a conversation about, um, if we don't do this right now, what the potential cost would be and how this starts to unfold. And I think, I know for me, I walked away, um, staring that in the face. And so it felt like a pretty big, I don't want to say we'd go off a cliff, that'd be extreme, but I mean, it's a pretty substantial maintenance step we'd be taking to not do this.
Yeah, I guess, um, I don't know, I guess, uh, at the same time as have we ever had this, as before my time, has there been a discussion about, is it an asset we, the city still wants to have? Versus exploring selling or, um, and I understand putting a, a building on the market that needs $8 billion to upgrade is, is like, you know, it doesn't make any sense, but I'm just trying to think, you know, is there, um, you know, do you sell it for a dollar so that then someone can rent the ice time out? I don't know, I'm just trying to. It might be too crazy in this discussion, but.
I don't think you're being crazy.
Other comments? Thoughts? I support moving ahead with this.
Okay.
And I do think that, uh, the maintenance, um, at least from what I know and what we learned in the past is, um, pretty substantial over the next few years. If we don't do something, we've been writing this for a while. We have a long, we have a long-term contract with the Hockey Association. I think we, we, we do need to view it as a ongoing entity, a going concern. That doesn't preclude us from at any point in time stepping back as a council and looking at what do we want to do with assets? And is it a business we should be in? And so I, I appreciate council member Hellier's question. I'm not sure now's, now's the right time to ask it. I think there may be another time. That would be a good time to ask it, and we, we need to move forward with this as a going concern. That's my feeling. Councilmember Volk?
Um, I probably only want to go forward with it if I knew the school district was going to be chipping in the, the other half. As for all of our agreements.
Clearly.
So, and, and all we have right now is discussions. So, um, you know, at this point, unless we have it.
Mayor, council, we've, we've made it, we've made it very clear to the school board that we would not issue the bonds until we had that agreement in place. We would not award the project or issue the bonds until, and I wouldn't recommend moving forward to that. And we've had very fruitful discussions with the, um, with the staff, and we're on a timeline to bring an agreement like that back to both parties here, and assuming we move forward to the project, um, by the end of the summer.
That's a contingency in my book. It, it has to happen.
Okay, well, for the public, you, I just want to make sure that we're clear. You know, because when you just, when we make a statement that I'm willing to just go forward, I guess I wanted to make sure that the, that the contingency was there on my part.
So staff will be working with our city attorney to put together an agreement with the school district, and I anticipate that that would be going to their board within, um, the June, July timeframe. So that, that is in place for the council to then to make a decision about, um, how we're going to move forward with the project. But it also enables for both the city and the school district to be able to include in their preliminary tax levy in September. If we're going to move forward with this, um, a portion of a levy to fund the first payment. That wouldn't be out until, I believe, 2022. So there's definitely a number of dates that we are targeting. I did include in the memo that we would probably be targeting in July, the second meeting in July for another public hearing for a tax abatement. So we'd want to have everything in place prior to that. With the school district as far as agreement. But ultimately, it comes back to the council to decide, um, with the construction project itself. Once the design piece is done, are we going to move forward with the construction? So there are definitely a number of pieces that will come before the council in the next couple of months.
Any further clarification or comments, questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I think we're good to go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I would suggest we take maybe a three-minute break.
So you're going to make me run?
Well, okay, five minutes.
Thank you.
Five minutes. So we will, uh, take a break for five minutes and reconvene at 8:20.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Okay, we are back. And we'll reconvene our meeting and move to our next agenda item, which is our COVID-19 update. And Mr. Miller will be leading us in this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have two items formally that we'd like for you to review tonight. And then if there's any other items, we can talk about that as well. The first is an amended policy relating to outdoor service areas for Lakeville businesses. If you remember at your last council meeting, you approved a plan that would grant some flexibility to businesses who want to provide seating or storefront places outside. And we relaxed those and so businesses do not need to come and get a permit for that as long as they're meeting some basic qualifications. At the time, if you remember, we were not prepared to address liquor licensing at the, because we were still waiting for some guidance from the state. We feel like we still don't have a ton of guidance, but we have enough now where we can recommend a revision of the policy. And that's before you tonight. And let me just get to it on my screen, just give me a second. Basically, what it does is it allows a restaurant or a bar to have an outdoor seating area and expand their, their licensed premise of their liquor licensing. Dependent upon them getting their liquor liability insurance changed, because that, that is tied to their licensed premise. And then it also has to be, according to state statute, compact and contiguous. And so what we are defining that as is if you have a patio and you want to extend that patio, maybe you can just do it through a walkway that's bordered by a set of ropes or a fence or something like that. We're trying to make this as easy as possible for our businesses to be able to do that. This would be an administrative approval. This would not require the normal city council approval that comes back on a liquor license revision. We've cleared this with both the city clerk and the city attorney. And we feel like this is an adequate revision and meets all legal qualifications. So we are actually recommending that you deviate from practice in your work sessions and actually formally approve this tonight, considering that businesses and restaurants are going to be allowed to begin service in some capacity on June 1st. This would give us the ability to reach out through our normal channels and through the chamber to let restaurants and bars know that this is an option. How many of them are going to take it up? We don't know. But we just feel like it's a good option to provide some flexibility, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Hellier.
Is there an appeal process, let's say, that comes administratively? We say, well, we don't think this meets the intent. What's the appeal process?
Yes, there would be. First of all, if, if for some reason the license is revoked because they're deviating from what they planned, there is in our code, as well as we've referenced in the policy, an appeal process for that. But if for some reason staff does not feel it's an adequate plan and we deny it, they would be able to appeal to the city council.
I guess I'm just trying to like think in my mind, the contiguous thing I get where the part why, I'm just, you know, I think of like a green mill, like that means that they would only be able to add where those four parking spots are, instead of like taking over a corner of the parking lot. Does that make sense? Because you wouldn't, you couldn't impede traffic by putting a, like a path from their little patio. So I'm just, I, I just want to be mindful that we can figure out how to maximize outdoor space in, in that. Or, or like an alibi, same kind of situation where you, I don't know, am I getting too into, am I thinking too hard about this?
I also believe if, I may be mistaken on this, but I also believe that they don't necessarily have to be on a hard surface. So they could expand onto grass.
That's correct, yeah. And you're right, Councilmember Hellier, some locations are going to be better suited for this than others. And unfortunately, we can't do anything about that, other than just try to be as flexible as we can.
Okay, yeah, I guess I just encourage the staff that's reviewing the plans, and I'm sure you already are. But if we're, let's just try to be mindful of that, so.
Yeah, Councilmember Volk.
So the one thing that I heard the governor say was that, that we as a city were supposed to try to do whatever we can to help some of these businesses. And so with the outdoor seating, and I, off the top of my head, cannot think of one right now that, well, let's see, I don't know that I can think of one right off the top of my head right now that would have an issue. But I guess what, what we're, they can't set up, if, if they had a place and they didn't have enough room, because there's, they're in a strip mall and they can't, you know, be on either, they've got businesses on either side of them. So they can't just put their tables out there. And it would impede traffic to be able to, you know, but can we set it up in a parking lot? So that they would be walking out, so it's, there isn't anything, because what you're, what you just, what I envisioned, what you said, may not be what you mean. I envisioned that they would have, have a walkway so it kept them connected. So the rope was connecting the business to the actual outdoor seating. And if you can't do that because it would impede traffic.
You know, I think we could, we can play what ifs with a million different scenarios. But you do have to have some sort of access from the inside or the licensed, the existing licensed premise, if they're selling alcohol, to connect to their new area.
Only if they're selling alcohol. So if they're not selling alcohol, it would be different as to where they wanted to put up to connect to their new area.
Correct. If they're not selling alcohol, they would fit under the, the policy that was already approved.
So like a Wendy's could satellite a huge area in their parking lot because they're not serving alcohol and you wouldn't have to.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah, Wheeler.
Who does all the tables and stuff, the benches for the Taste of Lakeville, like all the, does the city own a whole bunch of picnic tables?
The city owns a lot of picnic tables. And I might know the person who's in charge of operations for Taste of Lakeville, so I can tell you with some clarity. So the city puts a lot of the picnic, the wooden picnic tables out. But then the tents and the folding tables are all rented from local companies.
So could local restaurants say, hey, city, can I get 10 picnic tables to use for the next month?
Well, they're all in the parks right now.
Yeah.
Oh, they are.
The reason they're, the reason they're available for Taste of Lakeville is because that's before we put them out in the parks.
Gotcha, okay.
So they're stored in the winter, put in Taste of Lakeville, then they hit the road.
So in August, they're going to run into a few little issues, is what you're saying.
I hadn't thought of that.
I will, I will just add to our discussion. We had a Economic Development Commission meeting today. And there was maybe eight or nine business owners here, a couple restaurateurs. And, and they're both, they were immensely pleased with how the city has responded proactively. And, and Justin shared this information to that group as well, and that we would be talking about this tonight. And I, I think there, I haven't heard, either through that conversation or in direct conversations with certain restaurant owners over the last week, I have heard no one that's been concerned about, I mean, this has been helpful to everybody. And, and I, I do think there might be, we probably could dream up one or two situations where this alcohol piece may be problematic, and then we'll figure it out.
So I wasn't trying to, I, I was just wanting to make sure we didn't box ourselves totally, and that's it. I, I just wanted to make sure that we were trying to do the best we could to make sure a business could open. Now, you know, if they don't have the room, they might not be able to sell the alcohol, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're still, that, that's one thing that was not loosened or changed with any executive orders or any laws pertaining to liquor licensing. And I do know that's one of the biggest fears of some businesses, is that any deviation from anything might jeopardize their liquor license, which is, obviously, would be devastating to a business that uses it.
Absolutely.
So we're trying to make it as easy as possible for them to comply and still, still thrive.
And I would, I would add that I would hope that our landlords would be flexible and accommodating to their, to their tenants. Because in some of these cases, it's going to be some disruption of traffic patterns, even though there'll, there'll still be public safety traffic patterns that they need to maintain. I would hope that for this temporary period of time, people would be very accommodating to support what people need to do. Yes?
So I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised policy for temporary outdoor customer service areas.
Second.
Okay, there is a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Do we have to do a roll call?
I'd appreciate it, Mayor, thanks.
Okay.
It's a resolution, so Army of.
Yeah, so if you would like to do the roll call vote.
To Volk.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hellier.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
And that motion passes, so the resolution is approved. Thank you to staff for your hard work on that.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, the second item is mainly provided for your information. It does not require approval or a motion. But like every business in Minnesota, for those who are starting to return to work in as close to a normal fashion as possible, we have been requested and required to provide a preparedness plan. Tammy Shuda in our office has done the majority of the work on this, and I appreciate her for doing that. The plan that's in front of you goes forward with the, the phases that we will be returning to work. It's a little bit of a misnomer, because we have been at work, everybody has been, especially our, the people in the field, our police, public works, fire, and parks maintenance. And a lot of people have been working from home as well. But this is going to mainly focus on the office staff here at City Hall and a few of our other city facilities, and how they're going to actually physically return back to their normal places of work. I will state that it is our plan right now that staff who have been working from home will start to return to work on June 1st. That's a week from yesterday. It'll be consistent with how we are doing things way back in March, when this all first started, and that we're trying to phase our staff and stagger them so that we're working in teams and we're not exposing everybody to everybody at one time. The police department's continuing to do that, public works and park maintenance is continuing to do that. So for example, I might be working here at City Hall Monday, Wednesday, Friday, working from home Tuesday and Thursday. And then we'll have coverage at all of our service windows and all of our offices here, a physical presence. As of now, we are aiming for an early June quote-unquote reopening of City Hall to the public as well. We're waiting on a few supplies, namely some plexiglass windows for the, the service windows that we don't have coverings for right now. We think there's about a two-week lead time. Those have been ordered, so we're hopefully going to get those in place pretty soon. So I'm not quite ready today to tell you when we're going to have City Hall open to the public yet. But as it has been since we've started this, all of, all of our city services continue to be maintained. You can pull, pull a building permit, schedule inspections, you can contact our finance department or engineering department. Anybody needing to contact the City Hall, they're all answering calls and returning emails and responding to inquiries. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Comments, questions? Wheeler.
When will the DMV open up?
That's a good question. I could find out from the county what their schedule is. It's a county facility, so I'd have to ask, but I could follow up on that.
I hardly ever get any phone calls. I've got like six.
We get a lot here.
You can do it online.
We get a lot here. People still think it's here, you know, from last summer when it was here, so.
Other comments, questions? Lee.
It's a great, great timing for the front desk to be moved. So when is the completion?
That's probably middle of June as well. Another complicating factor in the date we're really aiming for is absentee voting begins. I think June 16th, for some reason that rings a bell. And so we're going to have to try to get stuff in place for that as well.
So related to that, I'm just looking at your mask recommendations. So are we going to require people that are voting to wear masks? And are, is the intention for the city council to wear masks?
So what we're asking people to do is visitors to City Hall, we're asking them to wear masks. We are securing a supply of disposable masks, so that if somebody comes to City Hall and does not have one, they are going to be asked to wear one. Meetings and city council and other commissions, we've been saying if you, if you would like to, you should wear one.
We're going to charge a dollar?
No.
Like, no.
So is it charge a dollar for a mask?
We'd get sued for a full tax. So we're charging people to vote.
I, I appreciate the work that you and the rest of the staff have done on the plan. And I, you know, as with anything, you know, we'll be tweaking it and adjusting things as we go. And, you know, the, the way that we have council meetings, and, and this was kind of a hybrid meeting. And we've had people listening in online. And I think that we're probably going to want to have some conversation about how we might want to move forward and what we've learned from this, and what that might mean. So whether or not we want to have some of that conversation tonight or not, we can do it another time too. But I appreciate the work that staff has done to make things work. And clearly, we have been fully in business. And I think our community has very much appreciated the work that's been going on and how things have worked. It's a good piece of work. Thank you. Other comments, questions on this preparedness plan? Otherwise, we will just go to general COVID-19 updates and questions, comments, thoughts in terms of where we are right now and where we're headed. Lee.
Well, I think it's important that we keep close tabs on the beach conversation. And I guess my question is, is Chief Long on the phone? No. What were the numbers like over the weekend and how, what was the tone?
Yeah, I did have a chance to talk to him today. Fortunately, or unfortunately, when you look at it, the weather wasn't great for an extended period of time. So they did not have any problems at the parks or beaches over the weekend.
I can actually report a little bit on that, because I was at Antlers Park a number of times over the weekend, and particularly during when it was really nice. And I actually took a picture, which I'm looking at right now. And, and it was amazing how people were appropriately physically distanced. Now, granted, it wasn't a 90-degree day and hordes of people there, but the people that were there were making good choices. There was people in swimming, which amazes me. But they were in swimming and, and how they were on the beach was appropriately spread out. And I, it actually made me smile. I mean, it, it felt good, and I think people were taking individual responsibility. And, and I just want to continue to encourage that for us as a community.
So did we have a presence there as far as a officer over the weekend?
No, we don't, we haven't, we didn't station one there. It was just on the routine patrol area.
A routine patrol? And is that the way it'll operate going forward?
That's the way planned right now, unless we have reason otherwise to, to do so.
Are we putting the volleyball court back, back on?
The volleyball courts have not been put up, but we, if they haven't already, the mayor might know, the buoys might be out, the swim buoys.
I think it's a report.
The swim buoys.
The swim buoys are out. They did go in, the volleyball cart, with the fact that it's still raining, it's raining again. The lower one is in the water. So we're going to, the post is in the water. We're a little challenged with the volleyball right now, but.
Well, I, I guess I didn't assume the volleyball would go up, because I don't know how you can keep the distance playing.
Yeah, if, it's my recollection that when we talked. Yeah, if, it's my recollection that when we talked about this, I think it was two meetings ago, that that was not included in the.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
I ha, I have had a number of citizen comments about being pleased that we put up some of the pickleball nets and the tennis courts, and I haven't heard of any issues with that.
I think, in fact, parks did reach out, and we ended up putting the rest of the pickleball nets up, just because we felt like it was going well.
Yeah. I mean, I'm getting Casey's updates, because I'm signed up to be on the volleyball league this summer, and so far, the update was that they would reconsider, as of June 1, or July 1, what the volleyball tournament might look like. But people are putting up their own nets. On the way here today, there was.
That was a big green one, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm. But yeah, they're, they're not put up by us or the city, so.
Well, we don't want to contribute.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's a.
Oh, right, and I saw.
There's personal responsibility, and, and us, you know, we, we don't need to contribute to.
It wasn't a good example of social distancing, because there was two very large teams of players on both sides of that volleyball net, so it was definitely not.
At the park?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, just on the way here today.
Oh.
We're going to learn a lot in the next three weeks about how Missouri goes up or down.
And Wisconsin.
Because Lake, and Wisconsin, because Lake of Ozarks was.
That was nuts.
It was bad.
Well, North Dakota's been open for three weeks, and they haven't seen a spike, so.
Yeah.
We're going, we're going to see.
As far as beaches go?
The whole state's been open for three weeks.
Right, the whole state. I, I think what he's talking about is.
Oh, and I don't know if North Dakota's the best comparison for us.
So something that I found interesting last week was the Dakota County update on the number of Lakeville cases is, could that be something that we keep on this COVID-19 update, just the number of Lakeville cases, in comparison to the Dakota County cases? I mean, the information that we received was that Lakeville had the lowest percentage of cases in the county, and I think it was nine and a half per 10,000 residents, which is, which is good. But I think those are the things that we need to keep looking at to make sure that we can keep our beach open and, and parks open.
Yeah, that was a change that the Minnesota Department of Health authorized counties. So once cities reached, I think, a threshold of 10 cases, they felt like they could release that data without jeopardizing private, privacy. And so the county did release that last week, and as we get updates on that, I'll be sure to share it with the council.
Great.
So how are you notified as far as, because that is a number for the whole city.
Right.
And I, and I don't necessarily need to know a number for a building or whatever, but how are you, as a city administrator, notified if there becomes an issue in one of our buildings, et cetera?
Like a hotspot, you mean?
Yes.
So I could answer that a couple of different ways, so.
I guess the way you're supposed to legally.
So first of all, if the state is updating their website in relation to long-term care facilities, if there's a case diagnosed there, they are updating that on their website.
Okay.
They are not necessarily directly notifying us and letting us know that happens, so it's on us to go on to there and, and see if that has been updated. Likewise, the Dakota Communications Center, the 911 Dispatching Center, as are all 911 centers, are supposed to be getting address information of confirmed cases, so that when, if a call comes in at a house that has an active or a COVID case, our first responders are supposed to know that. That has not been going as well as was hoped, because it is up to the, the resident to let, to basically sign off on a form to let them know that that's, can be passed along. And a lot of pla, not just in Dakota County, but throughout the state, a lot of people are not signing off on that information. And so we aren't, we are never 100% sure that when we go to a place, whether or not it's a COVID case or not, unless that person were to offer up that information.
Do, so when our first, when our responders respond, do they ask?
So dispatch is supposed to be asking questions. And if it has certain, for, I think they do ask, first of all, if, if you're a COVID patient, but they also then ask if you have certain symptoms. And then that is passed on to the responders, and that they do dictate their response and what they might wear, when, based on that.
Okay. I, I would add, in, in the context of this COVID update, that over the last couple of weeks, where there has been active conversations with mayors from across the state in terms of engagement with, particularly with Steve, Commissioner Steve Grove at Deed regarding our business community and the, the growing concern for our businesses' health, local businesses' health. And two weeks ago, we had a, a group of about 20 mayors that had a call with Commissioner Grove that was just a, basically an introductory call, asking for the opportunity to be part of the process. And what we learned from that was that they had, really haven't had local government involved at all. The governor hasn't had local government involved at all with his team in terms of the process of doing this planning and, and management. And that was quite disappointing to learn. And so since then, over the last two weeks, I've been, I've been involved with other mayors in two other phone calls, the most recent at noon today, and sharing further information with Commissioner Grove, and, and specifically requesting consideration of, of further engagement of mayors in this process, and also requesting some discussion with the governor regarding how we as mayors can be part of the team to help to navigate this forward in more of a regional fashion across the state. And that has not been successful yet, but those questions have been raised, and I just want you to know, as my fellow council members, that I'm actively involved in this, and I, I would say I'm hopeful, but I'm not optimistic. And I, I just, I think we just really need to continue to strongly advocate for our, for our business community, and, and advancing things forward in reasonable ways, measured ways that make sense for us as a community. May not make sense for Minneapolis, but makes sense for us.
Mayor, so have you guys as mayors talked about the fact of what your own statistics are, or your own, that, that instead of the mask blanket, that if we could demonstrate that our cases aren't increasing, or whatever, can, would they, would the governor, or our mayors saying to the governor, would you consider areas instead of just, you know, blanket across the state of Minnesota?
It's a great question, and the answer's yes. So for example, on the call today, there was 10 mayors, five from the metro area and five from outstate, including Bemidji, Duluth, Wilmer, I forget the other two outstate. And so Rita, Mayor Rita Albrecht from Bemidji was sharing her statistics, and they have like six, six positive cases. And, and so there is such difference of what we have, and so the answer to your question's yes. I mean, we had that conversation today very specifically, and, and I, I, and, and shared with the commissioner some very poignant examples of what's happening, particularly to our restaurant owners, without being able to open up their inside dining at all. And I think that while we didn't get any signal from the commissioner that anything's going to happen, I, I certainly think he heard the message loud and clear, and one of my fellow mayors feels that that will clearly get to the governor, and I, that was his sense. So I, and I, I hope that's the case, and that we can begin to make some progress.
Has any of these mayors actually stood on their own two feet and said, I'm, I'm the leader of my town, and I'm going to make a decision?
Well, I, I think that, and I'm going to speak for myself, I certainly feel immense and strong commitment to our business community and, and want to do everything possible. I think the, the matter is one of kind of moral for me, as well as legal risk, in terms of what we do as a city. And so some of these smaller cities that have taken some actions, you know, they haven't necessarily made the news, and there isn't a lot of stuff going on there, because they're smaller cities. But the kind of risks that we can, that we should consider as we think about how we support our community, I mean, include personal risk to me as mayor, and city risk in terms of the fact that we might not have insurance coverage, and some other matters that are really important considerations. And so in my mind's eye, the strongest approach we can take is, is the, is the things we've already done, which include the, the proactive nature we've taken to give people the temporary ability to do creative things. And also, among other things, also including some real strong advocacy, which for me included conversation with Senator and a representative over the weekend, and, and they're not in session, so there's not a lot they can do right now. But politically, one of them was, was in the, in the governor's same party, and so hopefully that will, will help to be an influence. So I think we, we press on and we push forward, and.
That's my sense as mayor.
Luke?
I'm glad you had those conversations. I, I hope that they do listen. I think, you know, my opinion about this is that the one-size-fits-all policy is really hurting a lot of communities differently.
No.
And I, I think that even Lakeville's a lot more like Red Wing than we certainly are like Minneapolis. And so if, if the governor would recognize that, I think that would be helpful. One point of clarity for me is, you know, next week, and if some businesses start to open, whether it's a restaurant or whatever, somebody complains about it, how are we going to handle those complaints at City Hall? Just so if somebody contacts me and says, hey, what's going to happen? I just want to be able to walk somebody through that process.
Sure, thank you. Mayor, Council, what staff would recommend and would be that we respond to a complaint on a complaint basis, or issues on a complaint basis. We haven't been, and we're not going to be going out and looking for issues. We trust our businesses to be behaving. If we do get a complaint, we would treat it as a code enforcement issue, so we would issue a letter saying that we've received a complaint. Here are the resources that we believe you should look at to comply, and that we will check in later and see how that's going. If it's flagrant and just blatant disregard, and it puts the city in a bad position, we might have to be a little bit more aggressive in that regard. But it's, we're going to really take it from an education perspective and give people every opportunity to, to fix the issue, if there is one, and give them the time to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I just, like a barber shop, for instance, you know, and they say 25%, but you really only can fit four people, because I mean, there's only one, I mean, I'm just, I'm glad that we're taking it that approach, and we're not going to be closing anything just because we're.
And I can tell you, that's a great example. Last week, I talked to our fire chief, and we had a lot of businesses calling us, asking us, you know, what does this capacity mean? And so we were out there helping them figure that out, and in a lot of cases, we were giving them even more latitude than what they might normally be. For example, a hair salon. Technically, by fire code, is my understanding, that the occupancy is based upon the, the space where there are chairs. It doesn't count the seating or the, the waiting area lobby. Well, we're, we're allowing, we're going to count that.
Right.
We're going to give people as much room as we can, so.
Especially if they can set up more chairs or something.
Well, Missouri was, was, you can get a haircut, I have to stand outside. So it was the person with the barber, no, no people waiting. So JJ was in there getting a haircut by himself, and I was outside.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, it's not ours.
I mean, that's, that's how it was there.
Okay, that's awful.
Other comments? Yes, Michelle?
So I would like to talk about this room in our future meetings. I would like to continue. I, I think it worked out great today. I see that, you know, we have the chairs set out and staggered. I, I assume there maybe can be a few more out there, but even if we moved the ones that are stacked back.
We actually, we actually had this set up for the EDC meeting today, which is why we met in here.
Oh.
In person today, which is why this is the number of chairs. So maybe there, if you take your six-foot, there might be a possibility to put a few more chairs, but it was set up for the EDC meeting.
Okay.
We didn't expect a lot of people to come tonight for the council meeting.
No, we, a matter of fact, we encouraged them to call in blind.
Yeah, yeah, so that's why it has this number of chairs.
No, no, I, oh, okay, I.
I was just giving the background.
For whatever reason, in my head, I thought we had talked about that this, when we came to this work session, we'd have the room set up out there too, to visualize what it would look like to have the public attend, and so.
Well, you can visualize it, but put it, put chairs six feet apart in your mind's eye instead of like eight, eight or 10.
I, I thought.
I forgot my tape measure when I came into the office today. I had all intentions of measuring it out, and like the mayor said, I tried to set this up blind to meet at least through the EDC's.
So did you lay on the floor and then?
He's six feet tall.
But you're right, you know, we can fit some more in here if we need to, and.
Okay.
We usually have a pretty good sense of if we're going to have a crowd or not, and we'll have to continue to monitor that.
So I like the idea of having both. I, you know, Councilmember Lee said both forever. It's basically what I heard you say. I don't know if that's what you were saying, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's going to be a lot of positive takeaways from COVID-19 as well, and I think one of them is just the accessibility of the meetings. We've never had regular packed houses just for the sake of attending meetings, but I do think, I've noticed phone numbers that I don't recognize on the calls, and I think they're, it's just easier to engage with council, and if, if, you know, keeping it on a call-in basis helps keep, keep people informed, then I'm for it.
Now, you remember that our, I, I, no, you know what? I just made an assumption. We are live streaming when we're at a regular council meeting, correct? It's not just being taped. We are being live streamed.
It is, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, you are live. Yeah, I know, I think Councilmember Volk, you've brought up in the past having our work sessions televised, and, I mean, this, this kind of setup, I mean, I don't know how this felt sitting here, but, but doing our work sessions in here in this location without having a work session table would, would take advantage of the camera setup and everything else we already have here.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean.
And we are going to move Councilmember Wheeler out of the center seat. He, he took over that before I got here.
I would say two things on incorporating these new hybrid meetings. One, I'd certainly encourage staff to sit, I just feel like when we're doing work sessions, it's nice at the table, so I'm, if there's two that want to sit over there over here, that would be fine. I, I just, I thought it was weird if they're, they're prerogative. The other is, I had someone ask me about that today in the builder community, and they just want to make sure that we, if we're like taking comments and those things, that it's still live, and so if someone wanted to respond to something versus just like, if somebody's making a blatant statement, does that make sense? Like, let's say we're having a public hearing about whatever, building, and you have 10 neighbors all say something negative, just still have the opportunity for somebody to respond to the comments. I don't think we'd ever have that, but that just was brought to me today, so.
Well, and the only issue you're going to find with that is that the lag on the stream is enough that if you were watching that only, you wouldn't be able to like call in quick enough and stay on topic, so.
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to do the.
You'd have to be on the call.
Yeah, I would mute my computer, and I would listen to the call. Yeah.
We did have a little issue with the planning commission this past week, just for some reason, some people were able to call in, some weren't, and so we were getting some emails, so that item is actually going to be on your council agenda on June 1st, and so we've encouraged people to provide their. And so we've encouraged people to provide their comments again in writing and we're going to provide those in the package. But you might just also want to take some extra time and care just if there's anybody who wanted to, to speak on that project.
Good.
Well, and they can also come here too if they want.
And they can. Yeah.
Okay. Any other COVID-19 questions, matters? We'll move on to our next agenda, agenda item, which is items for future discussion. Any thoughts? Things on your mind? Not hearing anything right now, so.
I guess the only thing I can think of is to make sure that we keep Luke's suggestion in the future discussion. And that was on our assets.
About Ames?
Assets.
Assets in general, yeah. I guess the one, probably, this is, I guess unfinished business more than. But if, I'd encourage the communications department to encourage mail-in absentee instead of in-person absentee as much as possible, just to limit the flow at City Hall if we can. I would.
Yeah, I've already talked with, with the city clerk, Free G's, and we're moving some money around to be sure we have enough postage and everything for that too, so.
Okay. Committee city administrator updates.
Mayor, one thing you had asked a while back about me just updating the council on who the chairs for the various committees have been named. So I just thought I'd provide you real quickly. You know, planning commission, that was Pat Calusa because you appointed or you endorsed that the other night. The vice chair is Jeff Witty for this year. At the EDC, the chair is Quentin Scherer. Glenn Starfield is the vice chair and Lowell Coleman is secretary. That's the same as it had been for the past year. For the finance committee, Barry Fick is chair and Laird Hanson is vice chair. And for parks, Patty Zuzek is chair, vice chair is Holly Weber and the secretary is Nick Thompson.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And that's, that's all I had.
Okay. I've already mentioned the mayor's conversations. I mean, I, a lot of those are coming up in the context of the regional council and mayor's work. And I'm continuing to serve on that executive committee. The other thing I will mention from other advocacy group standpoint is, is everybody's pretty active right now. Whether it's the municipal legislative commission or League of Minnesota Cities or Metro Cities. Where there's a lot of phone calls and a lot of activity. I think council member Hellier has been involved in some of the U.S. Conference of Mayors calls. And it's interesting to see mayors come together. There was actually a, a poll that the U.S. Conference of Mayors did. I don't know if you saw this today. I think it was a U.S., what's that paper? U.S.?
U.S.
USA Today. Actually published an article today on confidence in the mayors, the governors and the, your mayor, your, your governor and the president. And the mayors came out the best, so I felt pretty good about that.
Doesn't surprise me. Always closest to people is the most powerful.
Yeah. So, but there's a, there's been a weekly, weekly calls and, and other activities that it's been helpful to stay connected and understand what other people are doing and what experiences they're having with things as we continue to advocate. That's, that's my update. Any other updates?
Well, thanks. Tomorrow is my second of hopefully two meetings of the DBB of reworking our bylaws. We're moving into a more of a structure where there, the executive committee of a few staff and electeds. It'd be different than the current executive committee is all staff. And move those staff into a more technical type, technical advisor board instead of an executive committee, among other things. And then Justin, I don't know when you were thinking about having the IRU as, as part of our work sessions at June.
I actually just sent a note to Ralph today asking about an update on that.
Okay.
It'll be coming up.
So we can get into that at that point. And then I've been participating in weekly, it's a phone call, but it's more of a listening session that the White House is doing with state and city council people every Wednesday. Happy to add you to the, when I get the emails, afford them to, there's just a guy from the White House. There's, there's normally 2,000 people on the call. But it's, it's a good way to hear directly on updates on what's happening. And the last couple have been pretty similar, but at the same time, it has, we've been able to communicate by email directly to staff in the White House when we were asking specific questions about the CARES Act and city funding for whatever. So if you have any interest, I'm happy to forward to you the next time the input comes out.
Which reminded me of one thing, if I may just dovetail on that. Would you, Mr. Miller, just comment quickly on the CARES Act funding through the state and where we're, where we think we might be at?
Sure. So the CARES Act provided, I think, $667 million to the state of Minnesota. Portions of that got directly distributed to Hennepin and Ramsey Counties because they were over the 50,000 threshold, or 500,000 threshold. The state then is in the position of devying up the rest of that money to cities and counties. It's supposed to go toward reimbursing the cities and counties and other local units of government for COVID-related expenses. The legislature during the regular session was not able to agree on how to divide that up. So there's currently discussions about how that's going to get done, either with or without a legislative session going on. We're monitoring that and as the mayor mentioned, there's a lot of advocacy groups who are watching these things. And so we're, we're, we are watching that. So we continue to track all of our expenses and do it in several different ways because the guidance on how we can utilize that money is changing a lot. The one thing that hasn't changed really is that there's a deadline to use that money and I believe it's October, November. And so we are keeping very good records about that so that when we do get that money, we can utilize it right away. I will also mention, and I should have mentioned this earlier, that staff has gone through our budgets, our 2020 budgets pretty rigorously. We've identified about $1.3 million in either project delays or, or other operating things that we feel like and that we're implementing and not doing. If you remember, our very early projection was that we would see about a $2 million dollar impact, either based on expenses or lost revenue. So if that were to be the case, we would still have about a $700,000 gap. That's manageable. We can, we can work with that. But along with that is also no assumptions on how we might be able to use the CARES Act money to fill that hole. So we're, we're continuing to look at it and every day and.
Just sorry to interrupt. I think the Senate bill gave us around $3 million and the House bill was like 2.1. So it was, it's money per capita and it really got held up on, you know, some of the bigger cities on what they thought that they should get versus the smaller ones.
Yeah, and a, and a piece of this is the politics around the governor just deciding he's going to go ahead and do something. And, and it, it gets down to kind of a cash flow question. And do we take something for sure or do we wait and get caught up in if it'll ever happen? And so we're, this is all just a bunch of moving parts right now.
So June 12th is a discussion about in theory of going back in a special session. So you'd assume in the days leading up and right after, we, I think have more clarity on.
Yeah.
On what that number looks like.
So I wouldn't ever bank on it until it was actually there in the, the account. And the thing is, is that what the costs are right now is, is past. There's still going to be future and there's probably going to be a whole nother year of future. And so, you know, while it sounds like, oh, great, they'll cover the one point, you know what I mean? The, the $2 million that we projected, we're still going to have more costs in the future. So, yeah, but I would, I, I don't know. I, that's just, I think that you're, for lack of a better word, conservative approach to the budget and how we're moving forward is probably the safest. And gives us more options for the, the future. I do have two reports to give whenever. I don't want to leave this subject yet though.
Before we move on to a different topic, are you coding things that have additional expenses but might not directly? We were just talking about the added postage for mail-in ballots, you know? That's likely because people don't want to come to City Hall. Is that a coded expense?
Yeah, we set up a lot of different codes. Even on, even on our payroll, we set up if you're working from home, that's a separate code. We're, we're calling that indirect COVID cost. If you're working from home because you're quarantined, that's even a different cost. And so we're coding time like, you know, I probably have at least one call a day. And some days it's more than that. That's directly COVID related. And we're coding that as a direct cost with the hopes that we can then get that part of our payroll back. There's some interpretation of the federal guidance that says 100% of your public safety payroll during the pandemic can be reimbursable. Well, if that's the case, that's a game changer. But if that's not the case, then, you know, we're going to have other things to look at.
Yeah, if that's the case, we'll max out our $3 million.
Yeah.
But we're not going to claim that yet and we're not going to do that until we have very clear direction because the clawback would be a bad thing.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on this topic? Otherwise you want to continue? Did you have something else?
Yep. So, so I just wanted to mention that the Fire Relief Board met last Tuesday. And the one thing that came out of that was even though, you know, normally they do the waffle breakfast or whatever. And that they would probably do that in September if Panaprag goes forward. But a suggestion was made that they might want to consider just for the mental health of the community, if they could do a drive-through waffle breakfast fundraiser. So. So.
Why is this funny?
Because of P, I, ask me into later. So anyway, they are researching the possibility, the waffle guy is like excited. So it would have to go back to the firefighters to determine whether or not they wanted to volunteer for something like that. And then of course, the logistics of doing a drive-through and et cetera. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that was out there for an interesting, instead of just saying no, they weren't going to do it. They listened to an idea that maybe doing a drive-through. Then the other thing, I can't remember all the initials for that. So the dispatch committee.
DCC.
DCC.
Yeah, okay. I couldn't remember if there was an S in there too or whatever. But the gist of that, they didn't work, they, they delaying the budget because they're still working on what the COVID expenses would have been or whatever. So they'll have a special meeting in August about that. But what is still in front of that committee is because at one point, they had resolution to Cota County to have them consider taking over the hall services. And then of course, that came back to the committee as known. So they set up a task force to work on funding. Because that's, a lot of cities have the issue on how this is all funded and what it's costing them, et cetera. So there'll be a task force on that and, and I will be on that smaller task force.
I am too.
Okay. I know they wanted to ask you and I didn't get a chance to talk to you to ask. I know that they, because they felt as though Mr. Miller has the expertise when it comes to this subject matter. So it'll be made up of three board members, three executive board members, two county commissioners, and then representative from police, fire and what am I missing? Police, fire? Probably. So the sheriff. I think it was a sheriff.
Yeah.
And so I, I think it'll be helpful to go forward in the future because I, and the reason, and I'll be honest. The one thing that with the school district that I really did not like about the special ed program that's, and how it's billed back to the school districts, it's based on the population of the district. And the last thing we want is, in my opinion, I mean, I'm sure it'll get discussed. The last thing that, in my opinion, that we want is to have funding based on the population of a city.
And not by call.
And not by call. So, and that option would be out there. So I, you know, I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew how I felt about it. And if you think I'm totally off base.
No, I'm with you. I mean, because I can imagine some smaller cities in our county that have more calls than we do and we'd be subsidized in there.
That's usually what happened, that the larger districts were picking up the costs for the smaller districts. And so just from that experience, it just was not a good experience for, you know.
I wonder if in, I appreciate your willingness to serve on that. And I wonder if it might be something we want to have a fuller work session conversation about just in terms of the history of kind of what's gone on there. And I know I have some opinions about the county's role and, and how this makes sense to move forward that, and I think it might be helpful just to have a, a little more in-depth conversation of that. Maybe we could do that at the work session in June.
Sure.
Just because the committee does start in June sometime. I don't, I don't have a date yet till they get all the players involved. But they want to start in June. They want to give an update at the special meeting in August, but actually want to bring something back to the committee as a whole in September at our September meeting, so.
I think we probably have time.
I know. It's a pretty aggressive, but I would feel more comfortable knowing what you guys think.
Well, then there's history with this that I don't even know. So I've only been around eight years, so.
And I know Mr. Miller and I have had discussions, but it would be helpful to have yours too.
Well, and Justin's expert, so you probably know everything.
I, it was, they, they were very good and healthy discussions. So thank you, Mr. Miller.
I have one more thing, but anything else from anybody else? I just want to mention, as, as I think everybody knows, our former mayor, Duane Zahn, passed away. A few, a few weeks back, maybe.
It was in April.
Yeah, in April. And his memorial service is tomorrow. And they're going to be doing a procession from All Saints Church down to All Saints Cemetery at noon. And I do know the staff here has sent something around and, and they're going to be gathering out here. So I just wanted to make sure every one of you, I assume you might've got the email I got, but I just want to make sure. I know my wife and I are planning to be here and to honor him. And for me, for me, I, I wrote this on social media when we heard about his passing. But I, I mean, Duane, I always felt that Duane was a phenomenal mayor. And he exhibited real solid servant leadership skills in terms of helping people come together around issues and not being divisive. And, and I, I also count him as a personal mentor for me. Had a lot of conversations with him before I decided to run for city council. And he was very helpful and helped me translate from the academic world into the city life. So I found him very helpful. So he's a man that I will dearly miss. So just a reminder about that. Otherwise, if there isn't anything else, motion to adjourn might be in order. All in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Oh, I think we're good on this, aren't we?
No, I, it's a technology meeting. I was fully instructed.
Technology.
Oh, so let me just say, as this is now discussing the adjournment, if the future is every virtual meeting that we have a call-in function for the next 10 years means we have to roll call vote and everything?
It takes five seconds.
Will you allow me to do a voice phone?
Anderson.
Hi.
Wheeler.
Hi.
Hellier.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
Volk.
I don't want to go home. I'm kidding.
I'll vote it.
Thank you.